Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, December 18th, meeting of the Hubbard County Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. And I want to wish you happy holidays, hope everything is going well. I'm gonna start off the meeting by reading the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting Procedure. After that, we'll get on with the business. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruptions or other interference with the orderly conduct of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate a speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items may be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenters table, state his or her name and addresses for the record, and explain his or her request. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item to facilitate an orderly meeting. Orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if after being called to order the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, he or she may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker before because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will then continue its discussion on the agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda items will be considered after 9:45 PM. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 PM. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date, time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The Planning Commission Board of Adjustment through the chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Okay, so moving on to the first order of business is the approval of minutes for the November 20th, 2023 meeting minutes. So I'd ask my board if anybody has any comments or notes on those minutes, or are we ready to make a motion?
This is Mike, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes.
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay, we have, excuse me, a motion by Mike to approve the November minutes, and a second by Veronica, we'll take a vote on it. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye.
The motion is passed. So we have no old business, and first, new business is a conditional use application. Three dash CU dash 23 by Michael Soline, parts of government lots three and four, section eight, township 141, range 34, Lake Emmett Township on Pecoral Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 16.08.00710. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit per section 401, table one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to operate a recreational vehicle camping area use. Let's see, we have the applicant up here, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then we'll talk about what you want.
Sure. Mike Soline, 3809 Heather Valley Road, apartment 112, Sheboygan, Wisconsin.
Okay, why don't we just dive right in here? I'm gonna tell you right now that I'm gonna try to include you as much as possible tonight in stating your case for asking for this conditional use permit for this campground, so anything you can tell myself and my board here about why you'd like to have this would be helpful in us making the decision on it. So why don't you just give us a brief overview, what you want, how you came to that decision, that type of thing?
I'm looking for the, underneath the Shoreland Ordinance Condition Use Permit for our campground, consisting of 39 sites, along with a cabin that we would be living in temporarily, and then a future home that we'd expand into when revenues would allow so. Also, a shower house, restroom, mechanical buildings, which would support the campground, waterfront shed, and other auxiliary buildings, sheds for the sites, that would be standardized across all the campsites that would be allowed, as in the previous variants, eight-by-six shed, or a eight-by-ten patio or deck for a campsite. Looking for two recreational areas for guests and my family also enjoy. One on the east side of the property, on the northeast side, one on the northwest side, for purposes for herself and for family enjoyment, and also for guest enjoyment. And then, purpose of the campground, it would be, of course, for myself, for my business, to generate income, to be able to pay for the use and for income for my family.
Okay, I'm gonna start with my first question, I've got a lot of them here for you, so let's, let's just, I'm gonna give you one here right away, and that is, what in your opinion do you think, why do you think this property makes a good candidate for an RV campground? What brought you to that conclusion?
It's an area that I'm familiar with, I grew up in the area, familiar with the lake. The size of the property is, one, it's about around 25 acres in size, it's also in a more secluded area in the area, so it's, in regards to having neighbors, I think, there wouldn't be as much disruption as we're on the southwest corner of the lake, and there's not many residents in around the area that where my property is located. The area itself, the trees, the vegetation, the lake, also just the, be able to find a parcel of that size on a lake is very difficult as well. It's relatively open in regards to building out a campground, there's not, there's a large open area, so impact to trees and other environmental thoughts kind of feel along with that as well when we started thinking about having a campground there. Along the shoreline, it's a, has a nice open area space that could be easily used as a recreational area. We could centralize the docks and swimming area with minimal impact. And then on the north end, there's a recreational area, again, it's very open, wouldn't require much in regards to, maybe we'll have that as a place where campers can enjoy having outdoor activities, picnicking and things like that.
Okay. Out of curiosity, in, when you were, I'm assuming, doing research to decide on this property, did you consider other properties?
I did. There was other properties, none of them were as nice as this one was, others were. One property, for example, was larger in acreage and had a pond, but there was a railroad that went by and you could hear the train quite loudly, and it doesn't really speak to be able to reconnect with nature when you can hear an ore train going by blasting its horn.
Okay. My last one, then I'll kind of open it up to the board here. Have you done this before?
I have not.
Okay, okay. Anybody else here with questions for applicant? Mike?
This is Mike. I have some questions regarding the docks. I'm looking at the diagram provided, and I guess my question when trying to decipher to make sure I understand all of the dimensions is the slips themselves, the furthest out from the lake, you're saying you're gonna be 124 feet out, what is the length of those slips that are perpendicular to the shore? If my math adds up correctly, they would be eight feet, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe so. I thought they was on that. If I can just take a moment, I'll-
No, that's fine, because I want to make sure that's identified, so we know, I'm know what exactly I'm dealing with on that dock.
You're asking the length of the lateral that goes out, okay?
Yes, of the slips, of the four through 13.
This indicates that the gap is eight feet, if I read this-
Well, that's why I don't, it's, it's not to scale, if I add up my numbers correctly, it's 68 feet identified to the first slips that are on the dock itself, that first stretch, and then you have 12 feet of docks, three at times four, and 33 feet of space between there, so if you add those all up, it comes to 113 feet, and then four-foot dock, again, that's running with the shore, that would leave only eight feet left if this is accurate.
Eight feet, because it's gonna be eight or 10 foot section, it'd be eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, just so we identify that for the record, that that's what is there, thank you. And I may be missing it in reviewing all these materials numerous times, but do we have a size of the swimming area identified?
I believe I had it as 45 feet wide, if I remember, recall correctly.
Forty-five feet wide, okay, I do recall that. Thank you, that's all for this time.
Say, Mike, anybody else?
This is Ken, back to the topic of docks and our mooring. You indicate 16, eight, six of them for rental?
Correct.
Okay, so that's commercial, you're gonna be renting those out?
That's my intention.
To?
To guests.
To guests only?
Right.
Okay. How about the, all the kayaks, you're promoting kayaks and canoes and so on, where will you put those?
I would look to have a rack on the shore.
A rack on the shore?
Up on the wreck area, there'd be a spot where you could have them-
Because it's clear in the Shoreline Management Ordinance that you can't beach or store watercraft on the shoreline in a, at least that's one of the rules in the conditional use permit. So your intent, as opposed to try and tie them up in a slip or anything, they will have to carry them up over the bank and put them on a rack, is what you're saying, that's your plan?
Correct.
Okay. Is that considered a structure? Would a rack, a structure would not be, okay.
Anybody else?
Not at the time.
Okay, I've got another question, I'm referring to a sentence in Eric's staff report here that states that, that you intend to cater to customers wanting to use small fishing boats, small motors, kayaks, canoes, and paddle boats, so that their use of the lake is compatible with the lake's size and extensive littoral area. Could you explain to me how you intend to do that? I mean, what it-
I mean, in any communication advertisements, through website or wherever it might be, clearly state what the best uses are for that particular, for Pecoral Lake, I mean, it's not a lake that's well-suited for large boats. It doesn't do any good to advertise, not to advertise what, if someone's expecting to use the lake, they bring a large boat there and they're not able to enjoy it, they're gonna have a terrible time, and it doesn't do me any well, because they're gonna comment negatively about my business. So it's only an advantage to communicate clearly what are, what's best use cases for the lake versus letting someone else try to figure it out. Most, generally, most people don't take a look at lake maps and depths and then try to figure out, does their boat work well there? So I think it's, putting that on the website explicitly, stating that small fishing crafts, kayaking, these are the types of watercrafts that work well, and then it state, you know, things like wake boats and large, other large watercraft are not like really a compatible use, and discourage that.
So, and you use the word that I was about to ask, your intention is to discourage, not necessarily to prohibit such uses, big powerboats, whatever, that, that isn't where you're going, you're gonna try to lead people towards these usages that I cited here that you're saying that you're interested in having for this campground, is that correct?
Correct, I believe that the best waters uses are gonna be, you know, small fishing boats, kayaks, canoes, those types of things, that's what's well-suited with that kind of area. There's not a lot of area on the lake where it has the depth to support larger boats, and then multiple larger boats, it doesn't do much good to have a lot of campers bringing out large boats and not having, you know, enjoyable experience, and especially with wake boats, they can be quite destructive.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for Eric. This board can't regulate the size of motors or the type of boats that can or cannot be used, is that correct, on public waters?
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? Comments?
This is Veronica, I have a question for the applicant then. Since we're on this line of you renting boats out and such, do you have a proposal for, like, the types of motors that you're gonna have on your boats?
I would expect generally probably between the five and 15 horsepower.
Okay, because I know there's some other campgrounds that I've visited, or even state parks, and use their boat rentals, and their maximum horsepower's 25, which is about perfect for someone just kind of cruising the lake and not, so that's not, okay, just curious, thank you.
Mark, again, I'm gonna ask a question kind of directed at Eric, there's been talk about a storm shelter as a possibility, I guess this question is for you first, Eric, then for the applicant. Is that a requirement of a campground? It is not. Are there specifications if a storm shelter were to be built as to how it would be built?
I would imagine they exist, I don't have-
We don't have anything?
We don't have anything, there's no requirement in the county ordinance for that, and Minnesota Department of Health that also licenses campgrounds doesn't have a requirement for that, but just given the size of the campground, I felt it prudent to mention that for the Planning Commission to evaluate.
Okay. And then to you, have you been made aware of it, and have any feelings about it, any intentions, or can you give me an idea there, what you think?
So I have looked into it with the Minnesota Department of Health, I spoke with them, as Eric said, there's no state statute that requires for campgrounds, however, I have spoken with the camp wilderness, they have recently built a storm shelter over there, and they are allowing use by the public and other, in resorts around there. I have spoke with Andy out there and asked if I may use that, because what the Minnesota does have is that you should have a, you know, kind of a storm readiness plan, so if a storm does hit, what are you gonna do? So there would be a documentation, and campers would be made aware in the event of a significant storm event, that they could take shelter over there. It's about seven and a half miles, about 15-minute drive is what Google says, so. In that documentation, there would be also that they must remain quiet and follow the leader's instructions over there, so that way they understand what their expectations are.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with questions here?
Sure, this is Veronica speaking. Your shower house and bathroom stuff, I know in our impervious surface that was calculated in there, would that give any, any type of shelter, is it gonna be made of concrete, stone, what, you know, is it, what's it going?
Defensive construction lumber.
Just lumber, okay.
Okay. Are we ready to open this for public comment, or do we have further questions?
I do, I will, you'll probably comment first.
You wanna do public?
Before, yeah, I have some other things.
Okay, so we're gonna open this up for public comment, and those of you that want to take a turn up at the podium, I'm gonna open it now and just ask if you, if you have submitted a letter, that's fine, if you don't duplicate what's in the letter, that's all I ask of you, and one of my colleagues over here is gonna remind me when your three-minute time limit is up, and then I'm gonna stop you, because we're gonna try to hold that and keep the public comments moving, so with that being said, if anybody wants to make public comment, somebody stand up and step up to the podium, and we got a gentleman here coming up, so we'll let him lead.
Mary Christmas, by the way, thanks for, thanks for having us. I'm just gonna, Kurt Sale, I'm Kurt Sale, 17682, happy drive.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna make a few comments, I know there's a lot of people here to speak tonight. I'm gonna talk about just a couple of things. First off, I don't think anybody that has been around our lake for any significant amount of times believe a commercial endeavor like this is compatible with our lake. It's ag land, it's forest land, it's residential properties, that's what's around the whole area, so a commercial endeavor like this certainly is not compatible, not with 8,000 cubic yards of dirt having to be moved. It's just, it's gonna look like a, it's gonna take all the trees out on the interior and flatten it all out, it's just not compatible. Three quick things I want to point out, we talked about boat size, some of you've asked about that. I would ask if you could put a condition on there, no more than 50 horsepower for any watercraft. Certainly, he's, he's indicated that he wants to do that, let's put it as a condition. One wake boat will ruin our lake. There is no sandy beaches, there are no rock beaches, it's all vegetation, so one wake boat would actually ruin our lake if that comes in. So if you could put that a condition on there, I would really think that would be appropriate. Second, quiet times have not been addressed. Quiet times should be from 10 o'clock in the evening till 7 o'clock in the morning. There's quite a few people that like to sit on their dock or on their porch and listen to the loons in the evening, and certainly get up with the trumpeter swans that are on our lake. So quiet times should be put as a condition on this, I think that's only appropriate. And the last thing I want to bring up is the storm shelter. I believe that if it is not required, now that it's been identified as a risk, if there is a storm, and if there is damage, which we know has happened like our lake in 2008, somebody's gonna get sued. Now that it's been identified as a risk, that the county should address it, the county will also be named in that lawsuit. So I would recommend to this board to get a written opinion from your attorney, get an opinion from your insurance provider on what the liability is to the county if it's not done. Certainly, the owner of the property would have liability. Now that he knows it's a risk, if he doesn't address it, the lawsuit will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? We got one coming up here.
Hello, my name is Dave Nelson, I live at 17942 Happy Drive on the south shore of the lake.
Okay, if you could jot that down too.
I submitted comments expressing my concern about overuse of Pecoral Lake, pointing out the characteristics of the lake, small, two basins, almost all littoral area, large areas where vegetation reaches or almost reaches its surface, and very few deep-water acres. I also pointed out the adverse effects that the overuse of the lake could have.
So your letter is a matter of record?
Yes, it is, and I'm done talking about that.
Okay.
So I'd prefer that an RV campground was not on Pecoral Lake, but if it is, in addition to the potential conditions suggested in the staff report, I suggest several others, and I'd like to mention those. First would be to scale back on the dock system to reduce the number of boats. Pecoral Lake is not a suitable area, not a suitable area, for a dock system with too many slips. Bigger lakes may be suitable and less effective, but Pecoral is not suitable. I suggest maybe only five or thereabouts slips, that would address my concern, or some of the concerns about overuse of the lake. That is similar or more than the number of added boats that would occur if the parcel had been developed as separate lots. Six to eight lots, I think, was, was mentioned at a previous variance as the number that might be made out of that, and I think that's, it would probably actually be less than that because of the topography of the land, because of the Shoreland Impact Zone characteristics, and because of the aquatic vegeta- impact zone characteristics, and because of the aquatic vegetation, the lily pads, it's very dense out there and with massive root system, I've kayaked in there and seen it, that would prevent or make it difficult to reach open water. Also, boats generated by the proposed campground would probably be on the water more frequently than those of lake shore residents. Many lake shore residents are only there on weekends and only occasionally use their boats. So that's, that's the first condition. The second one that I'd mention, that's been talked about a little bit already, is no jet skis and wake boats should be able to use the dock system. And the third would be no development of a boat access. This was also mentioned in the, in the application itself, but as a condition, I'm suggesting no development of a boat access or launch on site because this would only encourage more day use and contribute to overuse of the lake. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Karen Tim, 18576 Hideaway Drive. Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns. I'd like to build a little bit on what Dave has just presented. Pickerel Lake compared with information from the county assessor's office to Potato is as follows. Water surface acres are, Pickerel, 311 acres, Potato, 2,089. Current dwellings are, Pickerel, 61, Potato, campground included, 411. Both lakes are equal regarding acres of water surface per dwelling, 5.1. Concerns arise when the proposed campground is factored in on Pickerel. Dwellings become 102, a 67% increase. This will dramatically escalate recreational use. Water surface becomes three acres per dwelling, a 41% decrease, a consequential change. These percentages don't include the 30 undeveloped lots remaining on Pickerel. When these lots are all developed, dwellings will become 132, a 116% increase, more than double the current residential development. And lake surface becomes 2.4 acres per dwelling, a 53% decrease. I am asking you to consider this lake comparison and the following questions. To my knowledge, there has never been a resort on Pickerel. How is this commercial enterprise consistent with current residential development? A campground was proposed and denied in 1979. Considering 44 years of development, why would this campground be appropriate now, when it was deemed inappropriate in 1979? Would development of this commercial enterprise enhance or detract from the riparian owners and public access rights to this public water? Considering that staff has suggested 14 conditions to be placed on this CUP, it would seem it is incomplete and premature. Therefore, I am asking you to table this CUP until Mr. Solene addresses the concerns raised both by staff and the public.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. I hope you have a good holiday. My name is Don Tim. You might recognize, I'm probably related to the last one, you know, that spoke up here.
Address?
18576 Hideaway Drive, Park Rapids, Minnesota.
Thank you.
I was not able to be here for the October meeting, but I have some serious reservations about Recreation Two that was approved through variance 47-V-23. And I thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns about this in the CUP. As I understand it, an interior path for this recreation area isn't possible because of the wetlands on the northwest corner of this property. It was considered a short distance on Holly Road, Right Away, or the ditch, so this variance was approved. My concerns are as follows. Campers don't really have a safe choice on how to get to this area. Holly Road is a narrow township road with no shoulders. What will prevent campers from driving to the area, park on the edge of the road, and causing an unsafe choke point for traffic? According to the Hubbard County Road Department, which I've visited with, this right way, right of way for this Lake Emma Township Road is under the, ultimately under the supervision of the county. Holly Road is 33 feet wide, which includes the ditches. This proposed commercial enterprise offers no safe choice for campers to reach Recreation Area Two because of the variance that has been granted. And this is the most important part to me, and I share this with everybody in the room, it's important. I felt a moral and a legal obligation to express this concern because God forbid if an accident happens causing severe harm or death, whose liability does it become? Mr. Solene's, Lake Emma Township, Hubbard County, or all three entities. For the above stated concerns, I'm asking that this CUP be tabled till written documentation can be filed to the appropriate Hubbard County offices, which would be the county attorney, so that this obvious safety and liability issue be properly addressed. I think this is a reasonable request for all the taxpayers in Hubbard County to expect, which would include Mr. Solene.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Got a gentleman in the back there.
Name is John Griebler, Giara Ebeliar, 18549 Ithaca Drive.
Thank you.
In process of retiring there, I've invested heavily in that property and several other people I know have invested heavily in their properties with the understanding of what the ordinance said. I encourage you to read my letter that I submitted. That's got some salient points to what you've been discussing. You certainly can restrict who has dock privileges. You may not be able to restrict who can access the lake, but you can restrict who has access to the dock, cuz that's part of the CUP. Let's see. What I'd like to speak is to the equity of this RV park. To short-term rentals, cabin, you know, what we're allowed as short-term rentals or cabins. I don't particularly care for short-term rentals, but I think they should be treated equitably also with an RV park. I don't think the numbers equate at all. This proposal will double the population of the lake that currently is there, if you count how many people are gonna be using this RV park if it's full. So it won't double the tax capacity of the lake. What's this place gonna be taxed at? I just met with the assessor today and had a long discussion with him about what I felt the impact would be on the value of my property if the lake deteriorates because of this. How is that equitable? Other owners will see lesser values and the county will lose that tax capacity. So there's a study that I read about Lake Superior, and that's, that's a pretty big lake, and the water impact on the quality of that lake and what it had for impact on the taxable values of the properties. And it was a $30,000 per unit loss because of water quality issues. So that's how much they gain if the water is improved. Well, what are we gonna lose on a little lake like this? For reference, I didn't use Potato cuz I'm not into those kind of vegetables, but Mantrap is 1,600 acres. That's 500% bigger than Pickerel at 300 acres, 500%. A commercial recreation area per ordinance, as the staff reported, is not allowed. And the board seemed to miss that point when they were doing, and it didn't get raised, that the staff said that a commercial enterprise isn't, isn't allowed a recreation area.
Okay, so can, can you try to wrap up? We've, you've used up your three minutes, but I'll let you finish up.
Okay, yeah, no, sorry about that. How is that equitable when you approve such a large area? How is it compatible with the existing small residential spaces? How is such a large dock as proposed compatible with a normal residential dock as seen in the lake? It's huge. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else for public comment?
Gary Laras, 17906, Happy Drive, Parker Rapids. Is it possible to bring up a copy of the map as part of the new business documents for reference?
Which map are you referring?
Just the Pickerel Lake map.
Eric, can we do that or not? You want some map of the lake put on the screen? Can you do that, or?
Item number six there. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Bringing that up, this particular map really doesn't show, but in the area of the proposed campground, somebody mentioned wetlands earlier to the south of the shoreline in that area. Being a nature lover and speaking of some of the natural things, one item that hasn't come up yet that I have seen or heard is that there is a resident population of sandhill cranes in that area. If a person is out, especially early in the morning on the lake, which I am quite a bit, fishing and so forth, it's a rare day when you do not hear those sandhill cranes. I have an audio on my phone, but I'm gonna spare you of that. I think everybody knows what they sound like. And they are there all season, spring through fall, from the migration in to the migration out, and you can hear them out on the water. And I've been in a lot of other lakes in the area, never have heard them anywhere else on the water. I know they're scattered here and there perhaps, but I'm concerned about that resident population of sandhill cranes and the impact that the campground right in their vicinity is going to have, especially if those wetlands are no longer the way they are now. And even if they stay in part, the proximity of that campground, I think, is gonna drive them out. Also, from a business perspective, it's understood the intentions of limiting the horsepower of boats and things like that from the campground. From that business perspective, if I was operating there, someone comes in with bigger boats and I say that, fine. But to me, those campers with the bigger boats, if they're allowed in there just to park, for example, and stay, aren't they gonna find the public access and launch there so they can use their bigger boats? And what restriction do we have then? The road from County Road Four to the public access is maintained by our little south side Pickerel Lake Association, of which we are not very many. We do not have funds to maintain that road to the extent of much increased traffic. I had a personal experience pulling my modus operandi pontoon on that windy hilly road, trying to get to the highway, and another boat pulled my pickup came through, thought it was gonna hit me, I pulled over, dropped my wheel right off the ditch, into the ditch because there's no shoulder.
You're out of time, so could you wrap up?
Sure. So safety on that road, the public access is very narrow, especially the last part of the road, two vehicles cannot meet, and also concerned about the nature preservation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hey.
Teresa Zollinger, and I live at 18298 Hannah Lane. And I would just like to say that I think that this whole thing should be tabled until further investigation is done because there's too many unknowns. We don't know what he's gonna do on the boats. There's too many boats for that boat launch. And I think that the RV park should actually have to limit the number of boats that come into his park because that's the only way we're gonna be able to control how many boats go onto that lake. And the, the boat landing is a problem because if he's gonna have, what he stated in his little application, was that he was gonna have them parked down there at the boat landing. The boat landing only accommodates three boats with trailers. And I lived there on that boat landing and getting to that road, and you can't have, if there's a bunch of boats being launched, you're making it so I can't get out of my driveway or get into my driveway. And the other thing is, I think a storm shelter should be looked at big time because I thought that I had read that it was required. There was an article in there that was from the, I believe, the Minnesota Department of Health, that a storm shelter is required for RV parks over 10. And that's included with the mobile home parks and everything else. The other thing is paddle boats. You know, where is he gonna park those? You can't drag those up onto the shore every time, you know, when you're doing that. And so you're basically going up on the shore? I don't think so. So where are you gonna park those? Also, where are you gonna put the overflow parking for all the boat trailers and everything else? You're gonna leave them down there at the boat landing? Or are you gonna put them over the park? Are you gonna have spots for the park to park your extra boats and trailers, et cetera? And the other thing I'd like to know is, what happens at the next hearing for the CUP with the commissioners? What is that? Is that a, is that another hearing, or?
I'm gonna stop you for a second. I'm telling you in the audience here that tonight, the vote that we take on this is, is simply to either recommend approval or denial for the county commissioners' consideration. We don't actually approve or deny the CUP here on this board. So that's, that's the process here. That's what we're doing here. I don't know when this would be taken up by the county commissioners, but what we're doing here is simply, like I said, to give a recommendation for approval or denial for their consideration as to what they do with it. They have final say and they will hear it either way, whether we make recommendation to approve or deny.
Okay.
Okay?
The other thing that I have too is on the boat docks, when they're, he was talking about clearing all that area that's down there with the lily pads and everything else. That's a lot of area to clear, and he was talking like 25 feet around those docks. That's gonna wipe out that whole lily pad section on that lake. And that is where all the spawning and everything else goes for the fish. And that is where all the spawning and everything else goes for the fish. And I don't think that's a good use of our natural resources for our land.
Okay. And did you put your address on there?
Yep, as you will. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we got another fellow here.
Yeah, Peter Temisto. I live on Blue Lake.
Okay.
24862 Hearth Drive.
Could write that too?
Yep. Yeah, I think that Cliff Tweedell, our president, had sent a letter in.
He did.
So you should have that. Just a couple of things that haven't been raised. One is, when does the DNR get involved? It looked like next spring is what I read. And is that true?
Eric, can I defer to you on that as far as the involvement with DNR, I think, on the lake clearing regarding the dock and swimming area? Is that, they will be involved in that? Am I understanding that correctly?
The DNR would need to issue any aquatic plant management permits that would be required for the proposed dock systems, and they would also review the docks for compliance with the state dock regulations. And I've received preliminary information from them that the dock layout that's in the application has been reviewed by them, and they found it to comply with the general dock permit requirements, so no additional permit would be needed. And then their staff person that does the plant management permitting will be out in the spring to do the field work necessary for that application processing.
Okay, thank you. So you heard his answer?
So if that's the case with the DNR, at that time, look at the public access. Because I assume that the DNR owns that public access. They do on Blue Lake.
I can't answer that, to be honest with you. I don't know. I don't understand. I've not seen anything in notes here that says that they would specifically look at the public access regarding, in regards to his campground. So you'd have to, you'd have to inquire with them.
Okay. As, in regard to aquatic invasive species, currently Pickle Lake does not have a, an inspector from the, a DNR-trained inspector on the lake. I would suggest, as in the letter, that if this does go through, that the campground invests in those inspectors. They're expensive. They're $25 an hour. And most of the lakes around do have inspectors. So our main concern is, Blue Lake, is that ours is a very small lake also, and we're fighting all the time to keep AIS out. And we look at this as a possible entryway, as well as people driving by the Blue Lake Access to get to the, to get to the campground will look over and say, hey, there's Blue Lake. Never heard of it. Let's go check it out. Well, that's just going to encourage these boats, a lot more activity. Last thing is Holly Road. We know that's going to have to be improved. Generally, adjacent landowners pay for those improvements. So we know that's going to have to happen, and that's a big concern for us too.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing nobody else, I'm going to close public comment. And let's, we'll go back to our board and see if we have any further questions for the applicant here. Anybody?
I have.
Ken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Spent a lot of time thinking about this, as over the last several weeks. It's clear that Mr. Solheim has been very good at meeting all of the requirements written in Shoreland Management Ordinance. I think Eric's report shows that with regards to impertinent pervious surface, et cetera, even the number of docking spaces. And so from that standpoint and a, and a board, we say, all right, it kind of meets that. However, there are several issues that have come up that we don't have to, we can't address, but the commissioners will have to. I heard it, storm shelter. I'm concerned about the load of aquatic invasive species now with the access with more boat. I don't think there's any county money that goes to that access, and I don't know if there's any supplemental money that goes to it. That will now be a risk. The access roads to the public access is going to have to be addressed either by Lake Emma or by the county. Holly Road seems like a potential safety issue. That's going to have to be addressed. And storm shelter, all those things that have come up, I believe, are county commissioner issues that will have to be addressed on top of what we're trying to deal with, which is the Shoreland Management Ordinance. The other piece that's missing, which is disappointing to me, is I think the DNR ecological resources waters have been avoiding doing their job. I think that Danica Derrick's input was totally inadequate. They're supposed to deal with daily load on the lake. This lake has 80% littoral acres, which you don't really want to run boats. Jet skis over. Her input is missing. And Mr. Ekstrom's, who although I think he's quite correct online in terms of the guidelines, about 20 feet on either, for a dock extension, 25 feet out around, all those things are appropriate. But I think the overall assessment of the amount of vegetation and ecological impact should have been available for us to make a decision. So I feel that's disappointing. So what does that do? It leaves us with dealing with the fact of, of the lake experience and the impact of this campground. It's complicated. I know the Shoreland Management Ordinance, and I'm going to start focusing on the docking area. And what, I guess what I'm getting at is, is the basic Shoreland Management Ordinance and what it allows, I don't think takes into consideration a small lake, the size of the lake, and especially one that is so heavily in littoral acres. And the fact that, then I heard the number 61. I had counted more parcels, but I guess some parcel have, more than one parcel per structure. Forty new residents with 61, that's what, a 70% increase of the potential load on the lake. It can't help have a significant impact on the lake experience. But without the input from the DNR and its impact on the ecosystem and the lake, we don't have much choice, but for me anyway, but to try to use my experience and make some recommendations that I see, I feel need to be done. I'll call them mitigations for this, a large of expansion and the size of this lake. And I don't know, my colleagues may not agree, but I hope that the commissioners, if, if my colleagues don't, will think. One is, and I have about five of them here, that, that I would like to see us weave into the conditions we're going to have to do later on, which do, I think, cover some of the questions that, that came up. First of all, 50% of the shoreline has to remain unaltered. That's a condition. I think the applicant has in fact filed a document that identifies that 50%, so I think that's taken care of. I think that the shoreline recrea- recreation areas per Section 901 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance and Section 1013 2B do not allow vegetation modifications in the first 50 feet shore impact zone. I would like to see that incorporated. The other thing, as a give back, of course, every residential lot, and I think eight's a good number to use in this lake, is allowed a 20 by 15 water edge shoreline recreational use area. So if you multiply 20 by eight, the shoreline recreational use area at water's edge should be restricted to 160 feet by 15 feet. And it just makes it equivalent to whatever residential would be. And I think the main dock should be restricted to eight mooring slots. That's would be the equivalent of a residential, if this was broken up into residential lots. And I clearly understand the fact that the numbers would say you'd be allowed 31 with this number of campsites. Even if you build 15, 24 or 1500 square foot cabins, you would be allowed 24 with the, with the 370 or 70, what is it, $307,000 of, or square feet of, in tier one. But when we've done PDU conversions, we usually try to break the shoreline up into 150-foot segments, which would be a residential lot. So eight, I think, is an appropriate number to use. But I think the give back would be to allow mooring of canoes and paddle boats and so on, on the shoreline as a give back for not having as many powered boats. And I think the last thing is that we should add that there'd be actually a restriction, no water skis, no wakeboard boats, and probably some max horsepower number. Watercraft can be docked at his dock. You can't say they can't be on the lake, but I think that if you would restrict that, and the things I sort of laid out are things that I think are good mitigations that keep a little bit of sense to the lake, what I'll call the lake experience. This is a lot of impact for a small lake. And even though we've met most of the Shoreland Management Ordinance requirements, I think common sense needs to come to bear to mitigate some of the potential impacts. So I don't know how my colleagues see, but I wanted to get that out there so that we, when we go through the conditions, that we think about adding those in. Or at least it's in the record for the commissioners to think about. That's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Ken. This is Mark. I have a question for Eric. This is just procedurally. Eric, if we would vote to deny or recommend denial to the commissioners of this, do we then just omit conditions and findings? Because we're voting to deny, if we went that route, or what, what's procedurally, what should happen in that case?
With the motion to deny, you wouldn't need conditions since you wouldn't be recommending approval of the permit, but you would still go through the findings of fact to support the decision to recommend denial.
Okay, thank you. One more question for you, Eric. Are you aware, or because I'm not in the county, are there any other campgrounds that exist that are similar in size and with a lake similar in size? Is this, is, or is this application totally unique? Just need to know what you know about that.
Hard to, hard to say what parameters you'd be using in the comparison, but there's plenty of larger campgrounds on smaller lakes I can think of. One on West Crooked Lake, there's a couple fairly decent sized camp, RV campgrounds on that lake, two resorts. So that's one that comes to mind.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else with questions or comments?
This is Veronica speaking. Just wanted to, if I could at this time, address some of the public comment. There was a, there was a comment about quiet hours. I believe in the application, I found quiet hours from the applicant are from 10:45 to 7:00 AM. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what I proposed.
Perfect, thank you. I wanted to address the cars parked on the road on that, according to that second recreational use area. As per any illegally parked car on a private, on a public road, it would again be illegally parked, and that would be, have to be addressed with the Hubbard County Sheriff's Office. At this time, your campers aren't parking on the side of the road. You're not, you're not, I would assume that you would be encouraging them to park at the RV campground and walk and use the access that you're proposing there. I mean, not, not access, but to that little recreation spot.
You're correct.
Okay. And the applicant has provided documentation for the boat slips from the DNR that, like Eric has mentioned, also complies with their regulations. And if moving forward with this application, we would also most likely require as a condition, the aquatic vegetation removal permit must be obtained. So those are the only comments that I have at this time, just wanted to address for public comment.
Okay.
This is Timothy. I have a question, and maybe it was in here somewhere. Were your intentions, I, I'm, to keep any permanent, like, campers' seasonals so you wouldn't be doing the in and out of?
My intention to be is have as many seasonals. Healthy number would be around 75, 80%. That would be my goal.
Okay.
What you said, that would be permanently?
Ideal state in the business would be around 75 to 80% seasonal campers.
So that would imply there's not a lot of RV traffic on that road? It would be primarily cars, people coming to there?
Correct.
Okay. Is that where you were kind of headed?
Well, and, and where I was headed is not so much, I kind of know where I think board members are, but having experience with family-owned resorts, I know in two of them, and being a part of the family that owned them, those year-round campers didn't use their boats.
And I mean, the boat ownership generally along with a lot of campers is fairly low.
One other question for Eric. You said we couldn't control boat motor size or boats, but could we make conditions that it could be, it be a condition that it be advertised on the web for his advertisement?
My approach was to put the condition of restricting what he could moor. Because that we could do. I think we could put a condition that says no jet skis or wakeboard boats can be moored at his dock. I mean, someone could come in from the day. You can't control that. But if he, if he's not allowed to let those people moor, then those wouldn't be the boats that would be on the lake. That was my thinking in that.
Mr. Chair, I know one of the questions the commissioners will have is, how is that enforceable?
Right.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but whatever conditions you put on here have to be enforceable.
Right.
So if, if it was reported that he had moored a jet ski, then what would, how would that be enforced?
Yes, good question.
Well, if someone calls up or reports to the sheriff that he's in violation, they can go out and check it. I don't know what's so hard about that. Like anything else.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mike. Go ahead.
Eric, to your knowledge, do we have the authority to restrict boats or horsepower that are moored?
I can't say for sure. I'd have to confer with legal counsel, but my I can't say for sure. I'd have to confer with legal counsel, but my suspicion would be that we, it wouldn't be an area that we'd want to go into.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions?
Do want to make a comment in regards to the horsepower. I am advocating that for myself, and I encourage lower horsepower, but there is nothing that stops a lower horsepower motor on a boat craft to throw out a huge wake. There's no correlation to horsepower in wake size in some cases. I'm just saying that you can throw out a large wake with a twenty-five, thirty-five, forty, fifty-five horsepower boat that's equally or greater than one that's two hundred, three hundred horsepower. It all has to do with the combination of the motor and how the hull design and the boat is.
I don't think that's consistent with the most recent research that's been produced by the University of Minnesota. They have a major study going on where they've studied boats, wakeboard boats, things like that. And if you've got a big horsepower, you're going to drive it big, or you're going to pull water skiers, and you're just going to generate more, more wake, I think. They...
Mr. Chair?
If they all idle, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
I would just say that the study Ken's referring to, to my knowledge, is in regards to wake boats, which are a different classification. I believe what the gentleman said here is correct as far as a large boat and a small boat being able to create wakes. It's been my experience at low speeds, smaller boats, or even at higher speeds can produce just as big a wakes as larger boats. Again, it's hull size, speed, and a lot of other different factors. So to me, it's, it's not a cut and dry situation that more horsepower means more wakes necessarily. It's all in how it's driven. So not to say that if they have it, they can't do it, but the statement, I believe, is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, comment on that, Ken?
The higher horsepower would definitely then enable water skiing and those kinds of things, which in fact would be detrimental.
You are correct on that. It's all in how it's used.
Mr. Chair, this is Veronica. I have another question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
There was also a comment during, public comment, about the trailer parking. Do you have a space set aside in your application for some trailer parking, for some boat trailers?
Boat trailer park in every spot on the southeast area.
Okay. In that section down there?
Correct. Right there, and then off to the left a little bit.
Perfect.
Okay, this is Mark. Again, I have another question for you, Eric. I guess this is just a what-if. If we were to recommend approval, and let's just say the gentleman got his conditional use, and sometime in the future, he decided that he wanted to expand this campground, what would the procedure be for that?
It's going to depend on what conditions might be placed on the original permit. If they would specify a certain number of sites, in that if he were to add additional sites, that would require an amendment, then he would make an application to amend the permit. If there isn't a condition that regulates the number of dwelling sites, then if he were to expand, and that expansion would comply with the allowed density, then it could be allowed without need of an amendment.
Okay. One further question. I think I noticed somewhere in the public comment, and maybe heard you talk about it previously, but was not addressed here. Why was, and I think it's called an EAW, is that the correct term, Eric, not necessary for this application? Can you tell me that?
The application doesn't meet the minimum thresholds in the environmental review rule that would require a mandatory environmental assessment worksheet.
Okay. So would expansion, if he were to do that in the future, if he got this conditional use, then would that possibly trigger that?
It could if it would, if the expansion would go over any of those thresholds.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
A question for Eric. Someone, I thought I read this somewhere in a different application I was looking at. The public can request to EAW, correct?
Yes, there's a process whereby a petition can be submitted to the environmental quality board if they obtain a sufficient number of signatures. And that petition would then go to the county board, who would then need to make a decision of whether they felt the petition's reasons for requesting that were sufficient. If so, then it would direct the applicant to go through that process, or the board could say that it didn't feel that there was need for a worksheet. So those would be the two options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, this is Mark again. I'm going to just query the applicant here. Ken's made some recommendations if we were to recommend approval to the county board for some things that he'd like to see on those as possible conditions. And I guess I'm just going to try to see what your mindset is on, on those conditions. Do, do you need me to have him repeat those, or are you aware of what he said, and what's your feelings on them?
In regards to the number of boat slips?
Yep.
I'd like to stay with my proposed. It's less than what is underneath the shoreline ordinance allows. If you go to what all other residential lots would be allowed, there, I don't believe there's a maximum number of whammy boats they can keep at their dock. I think the amount I propose is very reasonable for the amount of shoreline I own. And I, it's not like all sixteen are going to be out there all at once. A small, smaller proportion of that would be out there at any given time.
Okay. What else did you have on your list for possible conditions?
Well, the one would see fifty percent on Alder Shoreline that's taken care of.
Okay.
Eight mooring slots.
Okay.
A shoreline, a waters edge shoreline recreational area, hundred sixty by fifteen feet. And restrict mooring to not allow jet skis, wakeboard boats. And I think the one that should be added, that definitely a DNR permit for all vegetation removal and for the dock needs to be done. Those would be my key ones.
Okay. Regardless of the DNR one, your feelings on his suggestion about the boats being moored, their wakeboard boats?
I'm not, I'm going to be discouraging wakeboard boats. I'm not a fan of jet skis. You know, out of the two, if I had to pick one, you know, I'd rather have a jet ski than a wakeboard. But I find jet skis just to be kind of more of a distraction, you know, from a annoyance, from a noise standpoint, and that's why I'm discouraging that. I still believe that the number of sixteen slots is reasonable compared to if this was all subdivided into land, and each person who, if you were to have it docked, and many lake owners on Pickle Lake have two, three, and sometimes four watercraft. So I think sixteen is reasonable. That'd be like two watercraft per dock, so I think that's reasonable for a centralized dock for the campground.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions or are you to make a motion on this?
Regards to the waterfront area, I would still like to stay with the approved variance I had when we discussed that in the last meeting.
So, yeah, because you brought that up again, I'm going to ask Eric about that. We kind of went around and around on that when we did that variance. And I kind of took the position myself, I don't know if it was correct, Eric, that Ken was more in favor of putting some restrictions on those areas. For instance, no mo zones, that type of thing. And I was thinking we, if we wanted to impose that, we can, is that correct, still on this conditional use?
Yes, you could develop conditions that would speak to those rec areas and how you want them to operate and look.
Okay. Okay. So I think, as a board, I think my feeling is, I'd like to come to some conclusion if we go forward with this, that would do something with those areas. And I guess I'm going to have to work with my colleagues here to come up with something that we'd agree on. But at the time of that variance, we didn't put, I don't believe we imposed any restrictions then, so we need to do that now. Go ahead, Chair.
I have one more question. So can the restrictions that you are proposing, are they in addition to what the staff is proposing for conditions?
Oh, I'm just going to recommend to Mark, I think the thing to, some of them, no, let me try. I think if we go down all these conditions...
I think we need to.
One by one, and agree, we'll come to a couple of these where these would be inserted.
Sure. Okay.
And then we can have the debate, and we can vote.
Yep.
You know, and if four of you don't want to put something in, then that's the way it'll turn out to be. But we can, we could do that. That's the way, I think, I think Eric leaves that open in most, in most of these conditions, leaves it open for discussion of those things that I was talking about.
So this is Mark again. Eric, procedurally, if, you know, oftentimes, when we make a motion, we make the motion, and then we develop findings. And in this case, if we would make a motion to approve, would we work on those conditions if that's the motion after we make that motion? Seems silly to me to do it the other way. I guess I need to know which...
There isn't necessarily a right or a wrong way. Sometimes there'd be benefit in talking through potential conditions that might help you figure out what direction to take in terms of a motion. Other times, you might want to see if there's enough of a majority in support of a motion before you spend the time...
Right.
...developing conditions. So it's kind of up to you which way you'd like to do it.
All right. Any feelings on that board?
We should definitely do, go through the conditions.
Before a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Want to?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay.
You know, my perspective will be based on what's in those conditions.
Okay. That makes sense, Ken. Thank you. Okay, so let's, let's address the conditions then. I'll read off what Eric's staff has comprised here, and then we can address each one as we go. The first one, as a potential condition, is a conditional use permit is for the operation of the entire premises as one recreational camping area use venture. As such, any land that through subdivision or addition to the property which the CUP is granted, is added or subtracted, is and are not granted or allowed the right to operate in accordance with the CUP without first applying for and obtaining the necessary CUP from the county.
That's pretty standard.
Yep.
Good with that?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to check them off. Okay, number two, the overall number, types, and locations of dwelling units allowed to be placed on the property is as shown on drawing number C four in the CUP application, which consists of thirty-nine recreational vehicle campsites, a thousand square foot stick-built cabin, and a fifteen hundred square foot owner's residence. How do we feel about that one?
This is Veronica speaking. I think that is accurate. With that statement for the possible condition number two, Eric, does that cover the possibility that the applicant cannot expand? Then he cannot add any other units, since they're specifically listed in that, the numbers?
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
This is Mike. Does number two, I thought somewhere in here, and I want to make sure it's identified, that storage buildings and our garage, either now or later, I believe I read something, is that included under the existing documents that, drawing C four?
It's all, all the buildings are in the drawing.
Okay, in that C four. So we're also approving, then, if we were to go with that, the garage and the storage building, just so we're clear. Okay. Thank you.
And using that drawing as what we're basing it. Okay, so we're okay with that? So number three is allowed business days, hours, months of operation. The application states that the primary operations will occur from May through September, and that year-round operations might be explored. Is your intention right now that the May through September?
Primarily, yes.
Okay.
I would like to have the option to explore winter camping, but I also have the cabin on the property that I do expect to rent year-round, once we move out.
Okay. So I guess, I don't see the need for, because when doing something different than May through September constitute a change, that he'd have to come back? And to me, the might be explored seems open-ended to me, Eric.
That, that is not, that one's not written from a standpoint of that being a drafted condition. That's written from the standpoint of that's a topic that you may want to consider developing a condition for.
Okay.
So if that's what you'd like to do, then certainly I would advise that you delete that.
Is there any reason to restrict the time of the year?
Anybody's feelings on restricting, or?
No.
So, so we don't need the May through... What's, what suggestion here?
I'm okay with it being gone.
You're okay with?
I'm okay with the number three not being here in the option. The reality of will it ever be winter camping? Possibly, but there's a lot of work to plow in and water supplies and all of those things that prohibit it. But the fact that there may be a cabin to allow that, I have no problems with that. So I would just not restrict it.
Yeah.
Delete it. Just delete number three. Okay? Okay. So number four, potential condition is a maximum of three docks are allowed to be placed along the property shoreline in the location shown on drawing number C four in the CUP application. The furthest west of the three docks can have a maximum of sixteen slips. All three docks must be designed, installed to the exact dimensions on the drawing labeled, proposed centralized dock system for Decision Hills Campground in the CUP application.
And this is Veronica speaking. I believe we would also want to add, and they are only valid if the accompanying DNR aquatic vegetation removal is obtained.
Okay.
Would that be sufficient there, Eric?
What did, what did she say?
Yep.
In the staff report, Eric had indicated that it would be valid only if the accompanying DNR aquatic vegetation removal is obtained. So if we put that as a condition.
Yeah, that doesn't...
As part of that condition, Veronica?
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't come up with it, yes.
Okay.
Read it again, or say it again.
Oh, just that they are only valid if the accompanying DNR aquatic vegetation removal is obtained.
Eric, can you put that up on our screens when you're finished?
Once again, here's where I make the proposal that eight slips would be more realistic.
So we vote.
And this is Veronica speaking. I also would encourage putting in here, then, I prefer no mooring of watercraft on the shoreline.
Yeah.
This is Timothy. I agree, because it's not conducive to it. It's pretty rocky there anyway, so I...
Well, it's in the shoreline management ordinance under CUPs that you cannot beach watercraft and storm.
Okay, so let's...
We can add it in there, make sure.
Let's discuss Ken's proposal about limiting these slips. Let's just talk about it. Anybody have feelings on this?
This is Mike. I have feelings about it. I'm not sure exactly they agree necessarily with Ken. I'm, I'm concerned about the vegetation removal. It is my belief, when you look at the configuration, and if you were to start to do square feet of vegetation permit that would be allowed, unless you eliminate the slip dock that runs parallel to the shoreline, the overall square footage of vegetation removal is going to stay about the same. If you shrink that down, obviously, it goes out a little bit, but you still have certain am... amount of clearing around the main stem. Any of the slips lateral to that, and then it may cut back that overall width somewhat, but you're still allowed to come back around on the lake side of that to have clearing to move your boats to a twenty-foot pathway. So unless I had calculations showing me how much of a difference reducing from sixteen to eight is, I have a hard time visualizing what are we protecting in that case, and I guess that's an open question. That's, my concern is that if we're gonna restrict the amount of vegetation removal, then we should restrict, we can't do that other than by the docks, but I don't know how much that would actually change the vegetation removal.
By restricting, you mean by modifying the dock itself, because we don't have oversight on the vegetation removal itself, that's DNR, right? So you're saying do it by, if we were going to, by refining his dock?
And I'm saying if we refine it, do we really reduce the amount of vegetation removed when you consider the docks plus the beach that is going to be addressed somewhere in here, I would think?
Not significantly.
Yeah.
If you follow what Ekstrom's thing was, twenty-five feet around the whole thing and twenty along the sides, I don't know how much you squeeze down, you save twenty feet probably on the outer side, it's not a big vegetation. My, my argument is twofold. One is sixteen boats, this lake can't handle sixteen more boats at one time, it probably can't even hardly handle eight more. It's, you know, it's three basins, the one on the west is almost entirely weeds except for the deep hole, the one little finger that, that drops down before the long peninsula comes out, and then the east end is maybe a hundred acres. You can't have that many boats, okay? So you, so you got sixteen slips, what's gonna happen then? These people are gonna moor them there, and then they're gonna pull them. They're gonna go to Potato Lake or some other lake and then come back with the potential of dragging in aquatic invasive species. If you restrict to eight, what they'll do, he'll park them, just like Vegabon Village does, the big campground on Potato Lake, hundred twenty-five campsites, they store twenty, twenty-five boats in a field on trailers during the summer, people take those to other lakes, then they bring them back and park them on land. So I think it has an advantage to reducing the risk of aquatic invasive species and, and conflict and safety, safety on the lake, it's all regulated. Those are my arguments.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, anybody else have feelings on Ken's argument?
I, I still believe he should get what he's asking for here, half of what the ordinance We could restrict the whole lake, I suppose, if they all come in at one time and said they all wanted only one boat, maybe we could be fair that way.
This is Veronica speaking. I think that the proposed application suits the recommendation at this time. We, it's the due diligence of the boat owners to reduce the spread of invasive species. We cannot put extra responsibility on the applicant to, I mean, he can give out publications, he can talk to his potential customers and, you know, to follow the AIS guidelines, but that's as far as it goes on him. It's, it's everybody's, each lategoer, that's their responsibility to reduce the spread. So I don't think that reducing the size docks, one of the things that maybe we could suggest, or if you want to, if it's important on the dock sizes, is are you going to plan on putting all these docks in at one time, the very first year you're open?
No, I was gonna ask permission for a phased approach.
So that was my suggestion as well. They go in and phase this, see how it's fitting the lake. That seems to be the most reasonable situation.
Thank you, Veronica. I, I guess I concur with Tim and Veronica right now in that he'd be allowed more by ordinance, he's, he's asking for less. I have a hard time denying him that, because that's what the ordinance allows, so as far as the, the statements that Ken made and predicting that behavior, I'm not saying he's wrong, I, I just find it difficult to, to justify based on predictive behavior what we think the, the boat owners will do. I can't hang my hat on that, so I guess I'm inclined not to ask for a reduction in your slips any more than what you're asking for here in the application. So I'm not gonna ask that we make that amendment.
Okay, now before we go any further. I wanna know what the additions are. I heard that we would add a sentence that no beaching.
No mooring.
And mooring.
Mm-hmm.
No.
On the shoreline.
No mooring, beach mooring of watercraft is allowed.
That's in the ordinance, correct?
I know, but.
It is, but it doesn't hurt to add it as a condition.
But I think my experience is, just 'cause it's in the shoreline management ordinance, unless you point it out, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna apply, okay?
Okay.
So that's gonna go in there.
Okay.
And then you, Veronica.
Hold on, are we in agreement with that?
It's fine if it's in there, it's covered by the ordinance. If you wanna repeat it here, I don't see any harm in that.
Yeah.
Any harm in that, Eric, since it's just being redundant, but I mean, it's okay to?
My experience is it may, may not get enforced.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
This came up in a different CUP.
Okay.
So I am out of my canoe, and I wanna go in for lunch.
Okay.
Can I just pull it up and go to my campsite, or do I have to then actually take it up, put it away? This, this actually came up.
No, I, thank you, Chair.
That, she makes a good point. Generally, it's interpreted, no overnight mooring of watercraft, sorry.
That's how we'd wanna word that?
You can word it that way, but that's generally how it's, it's interpreted, it's no overnight mooring.
Okay, could we add that, Eric? I, I'll, I'll go with that.
I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead, Veronica.
At this time in your application, I believe I read that it says there's no boat launch.
Correct, I was done on purpose.
Okay, so then would you be open to a condition being placed, that there's, no boat launch will ever be allowed?
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
Okay. No boat launch, she's asking for.
No boat launch allowed as a condition.
No, no what?
No boat launch.
Oh, okay, is that additional one, or are we gonna put it in this one?
Additional?
Additional.
Additional, additional.
No, no, that's a good point.
You're fine with that, Tim?
Uh, yes, add additional for sure.
The, the other thing Eric was typing in here, the accompanying Minnesota Department of Natural History says aquatic plant management permits for the proposed docks and vegetation removal must be obtained. You should add that in.
He did have that in, but I think the aquatic plant that covers that. He had it and then he redacted it.
Well, but it's more than the docks.
But it says aquatic plant management.
Well, no, permits. He needs the permits for the proposed docks, but he, you need more permits for vegetation removal. You got a swimming area, you, you have the owner's docks, and you have that day dock. All of those are gonna require a removal of vegetation, so if you, if you're gonna, if they're gonna come and, they have to look at it as a whole, both permitting the docks and the vegetation removal, both, both of them, they should do. Okay? The standard, the standard dock permit that the county or the state issues doesn't apply in this case, that applies to residential ones.
Can you add that vegetation removal?
It's in there.
Where are we looking, Eric? Where is it? See that, Ken?
It says promo, it just says aquatic plant management permits for the proposed docks.
Includes the docks and the vegetation removal under those permits.
Yes, that's what he's.
Does the dock, does it include the swimming area?
How about the swimming area?
That's next.
Yeah.
Or down the road.
Down, that's down at number five.
We'll deal with that.
Oh, it is. Oh, pardon my start-up.
Okay, okay. So are we good with that now?
Yeah.
Okay. What number are we on here?
Number four.
No, we were, we did that one, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
You removed number three in the staff report, so now.
Right.
Three becomes four, four becomes five.
Right.
With what you see on the screen.
Okay, so swimming area, right?
Well, the.
Business hours, where's.
That one there, it says creating a door, a drawing of this area overlaid on the parcel map and it's, we use it, is recommended. Eric is just saying, recommend it, we need to spec, we need to call out that particular drawing or document that was given to us, this one here.
What exhibit, is it labeled?
Well, no, no, no.
It doesn't have a label.
Okay.
We should be saying that the, the fifty percent requirement as specified in drawing such and such and so on, or how, how, how do we call out this drawing, Eric? And this.
Label it Exhibit A, and then if you have, since that'd be the first one, then if you'd have other visual references, you can call them Exhibits B, C, D.
We have others, but we could, do we wanna just call this A?
Yes.
This is Exhibit A, we'll use.
See, Eric is just saying, hey, we, we need to have a drawing of that. That last sentence should be taken out of here and just identify Exhibit A. Oops, got the whole thing. The sixteen slips, did we vote on that, or we just, is a consensus, except for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so number five is the swimming area.
Is that on drawing C4 also? Or should we put the size on it?
Swimming area on C4?
Swimming area.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question, I believe it was identified as forty-five feet. What, I guess is our jurisdiction, can we restrict? My concern is not the forty-five feet going along the shore, but are we talking then forty-five feet out until open water and removing vegetation? We have no authority, it's my understanding.
That's DNR aquatic resources and waters.
To restrict that or to open that, but again, a concern of mine would be if it's in fact is forty-five feet going out to open water, that's a major concern, but if we have no jurisdiction, then do we leave that to the DNR permitting? That's correct. So then we need to state that.
Again, that vegetation removal permit required be.
Part of that.
Mm-huh.
That makes sense, Eric, that we, that's a DNR, I mean, that comes under their.
The DNR would, through its aquatic plant management permitting, authorize whatever they're going to for vegetation removal to allow a swimming area.
Okay, and so do we need to state the size of the swimming area for our definitions here?
I think we should.
Okay, and what are we being asked?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet by?
Just forty-five.
It's open-ended?
Forty-five is taken along the shoreline.
Yeah.
Well, you could say out to four-foot depths or something like that, just like navigable waters for a dock, you can allow, you can.
Lake changes too much.
Yeah.
That's too open-ended. Is that my feeling?
No, that's exactly what the DNR writes into their dock stuff, out to navigable waters, which is generally considered four feet.
This is Veronica speaking, Mr. Chair. I think if we just stayed in there that the swimming area is forty-five feet in length and it again must require the, the accompanying DNR aquatic vegetation removal.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Eric, could you add that into that?
Well, that's kinda what Eric writes in his write-up, but forty-five, what, why proposed swimming areas, propose, is that the aquatic vegetation removal permits will likely be issued, well, it says will likely be issued. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, we ready to move on to the next shoreline recreational use areas, and whether we place conditions on those areas?
This is Veronica speaking. I, when we spoke with the applicant at the variance hearing, he commented that he wanted it, that it would be vegetated, 'cause we made it very clear that there would be no sand beach. For myself, I would like to see some type of condition saying that it must be vegetated and maintained. I don't have any concerns at this time with any restrictions, because he has the restrictions on the fifty percent along all the other shoreline that has to be natural.
Okay, Ken, I know you had feelings on that.
I wanna hear again what you proposed, that say.
That it must be vegetated, so I want it to at least have a grassy area. He commented, you can re, you can repeat that if you would please, what your plans are for your recreational use area, the larger one, what you foresee out there.
I foresee something of it being mowed, but vegetated across the whole area. Some that I may leave taller, because as Bob Ekstrom gave me a book, uh, gave me a book, recommended a book that I've read, so I've been reading more, having some of that taller grass does get the geese to not come up on shore, so there's, so it may not all be mowed, but, you know, a good chunk of it will be mowed and maintained, but it will remain vegetated.
Okay.
Ken, feelings on these?
Yeah, I do, I, I feel fairly strongly that you should try to adhere to the, you know, shore impact zone fifty feet, but I, we could look at the drawing, if you actually look at the drawing, for him to have that shoreline recreational use area size, we approved, and if we made him. keep fifty feet un-mowed, un-whatever, he'd have to tear out a bunch of trees and stuff higher up on the hill in order to, you see where the fifty foot goes there?
It's the pink, right?
Yeah, and so if we said that that whole fifty feet had to remain in natural vegetation, you know, things, he doesn't have any, he doesn't have room for that short SRUA.
Right.
So he'd have to move it back, and what he'd do is he'd have to tear out all these trees. And so I'm sitting here kind of like, maybe that's unfair and unreasonable, but at some level, I wish there was, you know, twenty feet, or, you know, sometime we've done that, twenty feet, twenty-five feet, we've made smaller zones to prevent water runoff. But I'm kind of going neutral on that now, and not, not want to push it as hard, considering the rest of the stuff. I don't know the rest, how the rest of you feel.
Anybody else on that?
There's no doubt that if he mows that, every ounce of rain that falls on that shoreline rec area is gonna zip right off into the lake. I wish there was some way to prevent that. I don't know.
And Veronica, your, your suggestion is simply that it stays vegetated in another
Must be vegetated and maintained, and you can also put in there no sand beach, but that's obvious, but
I think that's okay.
Yeah.
Considering the whole shoreline, the whole rest of the shoreline is virtually non-impact to the lake. I think the, the, the destruction of trees and stuff like that would be more detrimental than to leave it as it is, so.
Okay.
Back off.
Okay. So Eric, would you be able to include what Veronica has suggested, if it's not in there?
It's, I don't, yeah.
It is in there?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Sure.
Just, I, just that I wanted a condition that stated that the recreation use areas must be vegetated and maintained, no sand beach allowed.
How's that look, Veronica?
I like that.
Do you want to add, Eric, the two SRAs, um, approved in, in variance forty-seven, whatever, what are the, what is it?
Yeah. B dash twenty-three.
Twenty-seven, B twenty-three, probably.
Yeah.
There we go.
One more question.
Okay.
This is for Eric. Do we need to also cover in this condition, um, that this is only valid if the CUP is approved? Because we stated that in the variance though, right?
This is, you're developing conditions for the CUP, so this would only apply if it is
Only if it is, okay.
Okay. Let's see, so where are we here? Number seven? Outside lighting, so any lighting isn't detrimental to neighboring property owners. The application states that down fire lighting will be provided to allow safe guest travel to the shower restroom structure and along the walking path that provide access to, to the proposed east shoreline recreational use area. Does anybody have any additions or changes to that?
I have a question, um, the owner, that what are you proposing, what do you envision for lighting heights and, and things like that? But height is a, a consideration in, in overall light pollution.
So most of it be on the structure itself. In regards to the path, I would imagine something around no more than ten feet or so, pointing down. It's gonna be, you know, lower voltage type lighting, just enough to be able to make sure you can get to and from the lake recreational area safely. I'm not looking to have bright streetlights or, you know, Walmart parking lot lights coming to, you know, coming down, it's
Would, um, would you be open to much shorter, I'm not as concerned with the lighting in the campground going to the shower building as this pathway. I have seen being used a bollard that maybe is only three or four feet tall, that has the light directed down where it totally illuminates the pathway walking, but it virtually eliminates all, um, light going up.
That's fine.
So I would propose that any walkway lighting be on bollards no higher than four feet and directed down.
Yeah.
There's, there's standard, there's standard commercial down lighting things even for higher than that, uh, that work, but yours would be extra for that.
I, I'm well aware of, of those issues, and, and my experience has been, these bollards, um, yes, they, they do design them, but the higher you go, the more light pollution you have regardless of wattage and, and lumens and things like that. So keeping it low illuminates the path, that's what they need to see, going, coming or going, and, and it eliminates virtually all of the uplighting, which is the sort, the light pollution that I'm concerned with.
Okay.
Guess the only thing I would say is, you know, if there's some sort of state code or something like that, where this doesn't meet that, that we follow state code.
They will, they do it
I don't know, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you can put, certainly and put that in, I've, I've seen them installed, where allowed in, in the code.
Okay. Does that work, Mike?
That works.
His language? Everybody fine with that? Okay. Um, all right, so we're gonna move on to number eight here, which is outside sound levels. Generally best regulated by setting quiet hours. The application states that the campground will have quiet hours of ten forty-five to seven AM. Thus, it seems reasonable to make a condition that there must be quiet hours within this time period on a daily basis. Fine with?
Mister Chair.
Yep.
I, I think we need that, but I would suggest that it be ten PM to seven AM, which is more common in all of the campgrounds that I've stayed in.
And we've generally used that.
I'm fine with that. So we change that to ten?
Yeah.
Eric?
I have seen campgrounds in the area that have ten thirty and eleven o'clock. In Hubbard County.
How about we meet in the middle at ten thirty?
That's good for grandfather.
Um, anybody else for ten thirty?
Um, I'll go with ten thirty.
Your ten, what do you, Ken?
We've tended to use ten o'clock for a lot of the other applications we've done it, but, uh
I'm gonna stay with Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was gonna say you could say ten on Sunday through Thursday and ten thirty on Friday, Saturday.
I would, I could live with that.
I mean, that's more work, but, I mean, on the weekends, I can see it being a little bit later.
I get that's complicated. I go with ten thirty before I start trying to manage on a daily basis.
Mm-huh.
Ten thirty, ten thirty. My informal tally here, uh
It's fine.
Okay. Ten, ten thirty it is, Eric. Okay, the two, I'll wait till you finish.
In this case, the other campers are gonna be more affected than the people on the lake, given where that is, of all those trees and stuff.
Okay, um, fine with that. Number nine seems self-explanatory. We've, we've got designs for the two proposed. Does anybody have any for those septic systems? Any additions, Tim?
No.
Okay, so we're good with? And, uh, before the CUP, uh, bringing permit can be issued, yep, I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay, so then moving on, um, to the potential for a storm shelter.
I'd suggest take that out, and it's up to the commissioners to decide whether they want to invoke a storm shelter. It's a bigger issue.
One thought I had was, what would you think of the idea of combining, say that maybe Veronica mentioned, or Mike, I'm not sure, that shower house and making it a combination shower house, storm shelter, and so you'd be building it different, I would imagine. I don't have, and I don't think we have any specifications, if there are any, but I would imagine it might be required to be exterior walls out of concrete block or something like that, but what's your feeling on that? I know
I would like to not move down that path. It's, it's quite an expense. I have looked at it. It's quite significant.
For combining or to do it separately?
Combine it even.
You have looked at that? Any feelings?
I'm with Ken. I think we should leave that to the county commissioners.
Okay.
We have not required that on any, uh, of the CUPs that I'm aware of and
Any of the campgrounds or anything, and if you were to a storm shelter, the one that went through in oh-eight, it ripped through on Potato Lake and Bull Lake and everything else in between, so you got a lot of bigger issue if a storm comes through than this campground.
Okay.
In addition, we, you know, I have touched base with camp wilderness, and they are, would be allowing our guests to take shelter when they're storm shelters. So if guests felt they needed to take shelter, that is an option for them.
Yeah, my own opinion on that's unrealistic to try to get people to a different location if a storm hits, but I guess I concur with Ken that we'll, uh, pass this on to the commissioners if they choose to address that. Okay. Okay, um, so now we're at signage?
This is Veronica speaking. The concern I have would be a digital sign. I prefer a non-digital for sure. Otherwise, I think that as long as the applicant, um, goes by the shoreline management sign ordinance.
Or the county sign ordinance?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I just would say, I would prefer a condition saying non-digital. What are your proposals for signs?
I don't have any signs, but I wouldn't be looking at doing a digital sign. It'd be staying within what the ordinance would allow.
So then you would be open to me placing a condition saying non-digital?
Yeah. It's fine.
Okay.
Those flashing signs in the middle of the night, I, I just don't care for, I don't
I'm fine with that. So non-digital and then conforming to the county
Yeah, shoreline management ordinance, signage ordinance.
Okay, reading, uh, the next one. Due to the tier-two impervious surface area percentage variance, consider creating a condition that specifies the number, type, and dimensions of impervious surface areas allowed on the campsites. Specifying standard dimensions for these accessory features will also aid the department in administering the permit.
Right, so Mister Chair, that's gonna be in regards to, like, accessory structures and decks. Some of them were already allowed per variance.
I'm losing, what, what is this? Are you talking about platforms and, and
Right. Cause that'll be the impervious service, surface.
Well, when we did the impervious surface calculations, it was on, what, what did you use, the full four hundred square feet or whatever it is, or? Eric?
We used the information supplied in the variance application, which also got into specific accessory features that are planned, such as a fire ring, a deck or platform alongside each trailer, and then also a shed. And so
What were those proposed dimensions?
Sheds were, uh, eight by six, the deck or patio would be eight by ten. I would probably say variance forty-seven is what I would use. It was calculated, those impervious surfaces were part of the impervious calculation.
Right, but they weren't allowed on all of your campsites, only a certain number.
And I specified in that variance which ones had that calculation in it.
Correct, so here's where we, we can leave it, draw the line, and leave it as per that variance and not allow any other accessory structures, six by eights and decks on those that aren't included.
Is this only an issue in tier two?
I believe so. Is that correct?
Well, tier two is more of a concern because of, of the variance allowing the overage on impervious surface area, but you could also say for the aesthetics, you want a standard size that's allowed, or else if you don't address it, then assuming they'd comply with impervious surface requirements and setbacks, then they could size them however.
I think for ease of administration, I'd be more in favor of just specifying that the decks, any deck cannot exceed eight by ten, and any shed eight by six.
This is Veronica. I agree with that.
That makes sense, Eric? I mean, is that reasonable? Okay.
And that applies to the whole campground?
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's a lot easier to administer saying this is the shed if you want one, or, you know, if we can place it, it's this one. I'd rather have the uniformity. It's just a lot easier to deal with as a owner-operator.
You might add a, a sentence in there that they cannot exceed this, but also within tier two can't increase the impervious surface from what's been allowed by the variance.
So you speak in all type.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Eric.
The, any decks must be maxed, can, must be smaller than, must be no larger than eight by ten. Any shed can be no larger than eight by six. And the impervious surface in tier two cannot increase beyond the variance issued. So that way, if there's, if that were, to put that on each site, and two would increase that from what was allowed, then it can't be done.
So we won't have to go and argue about platforms anymore.
Can you capture it, Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We good with that, everybody? So his last potential is, uh, a license from the Minnesota Department of Health is required to operate the proposed campground use. Consider whether a copy of initially issued license must be provided to the county before the operating permit can be issued.
I think that's, should, should be the way we state it.
I have no issue providing it.
Hey, well, any problems with that, Ken?
No.
Okay. Tim, you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we will leave that one as is?
This is Veronica speaking. Is that, um, license a yearly This is Veronica speaking. Is that, um, license a yearly and annual license, do you know? Or is it a one time? How often do they come out and do inspections or licensing?
I'm not sure, but I believe it's annually.
Is that correct, Eric?
Yep.
To your knowledge? Okay.
Do you want that then? You want one every year, or you just want first one?
He's gonna, he's required to have it by the state, so it's, it's more a matter of making sure everything's in place that he needs to.
To begin with.
To ensure the campground's able to safely operate for the public.
Perfect.
So you want that every year or you just want that initially to start up?
Just one.
Just the.
I'm clarifying.
It's between you and the health department.
Yep, just one, mhm.
Okay, so I think we've exhausted Eric's potential. Do we have any additional conditions that we want to?
We, we talked about limiting, uh, jet skis and wakeboard, uh, for mooring. Did we lose that or decide not to add that in? I tried to go back through my notes here.
Yep. Feelings on Ken's about restricting wakeboards?
All we can do is restrict.
And jet skis?
My question is, do we have the authority to do that?
We don't.
That I'd have to double check with council before I can say for sure.
Why not? It's his, it's his dock. He has a campground. He could restrict him.
He could.
Yeah. And we're asking him to, we're saying, you should.
But, but can we implement that?
I think they would be the two biggest. How should I say it? Uh, lake experience detractors. So, um.
Yeah, I understand. I agree with that.
I have no problem with that restriction, provided council says that we can actually do it. I don't, don't like to do things that we're not.
Yeah, I don't think, in my opinion, that we would implement that unless we know.
I mean, we're in the ordinance, we're only given authority that the state specifically grants, and the state in their rules speaks to docks and number of slips, but it doesn't address watercraft type.
That's why I don't think we.
So I, I don't, I'd be very surprised if council would say that we could regulate that.
Okay. And I think we need to pass on that.
We can't regulate what goes on to the lake, but we could put a condition that he doesn't have those, he can't bore those.
We just decided that we can't do that.
No, it, it doesn't say anything in the ordinance, but it gives us lots of flexibility and the commissioner's flexibility for things that could impact the, uh, overall lake.
Okay, let's see what Chair has to say on that.
Sure, I would suggest if you forward, um, with this and send it to the commissioners with your approval, if I can use that term, a recommendation for approval.
Recommendation, yeah.
Um, that Eric you would check, and so when we would have the discussion with the commissioners, you would have an answer to that question. You just check with legal prior to the commissioners taking it up.
Well, the fact that there's consensus, we'd put it in there for allowed.
So, Chair, you're suggesting that Eric would find out?
I'm, I'm not suggesting you have to put it in there for the sake of discussion if it comes before the commissioners for approval. If I asked you that question, you would have an answer for me.
I would certainly hope that I could get that from council in time.
Okay, okay. That tends to make me think we leave that for the commissioners. Is, is that everybody else's feelings?
I think commissioners will be aware of that, and Eric is, is that they would have an answer and they would be able to insert that, and I, at least my feelings are, if allowed, I have no problem with that condition.
Right.
Agreed.
Okay, okay. Does anybody else have any other conditions that they would want to add to this list?
No, Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking. Um, miss, just wanted to make sure the applicant, your understanding of all the conditions? And do you have any questions that, on anything that we've discussed?
I don't.
Nobody else has anything else to add to these conditions?
Eric, you need anything else that you think we should address? Under conditions, okay.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion?
Yeah, this is Veronica. I make a motion that we recommend approval to the county board, um, for the RV unit by Mr. Solene with the adopting the staff's findings of facts and the conditions that we provided.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica. And this is Mark, and I will second Veronica's motion. And she has, uh, we've given conditions and she's, uh, suggested that we adopt staff's findings of fact. So, um, we're going to take a vote on this. Um, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote nay.
Mike, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And this is Mark. I vote aye. So the, uh, motion has passed, and we will pass this recommendation along to the county commissioners for their consideration. That's all we have for you tonight, I believe.
So we, we by definition accepted all of Eric's, Eric's, um, things, right?
Um, I think there was at least one we deleted.
No, no, conditions, I'm talking about finding the fact. I didn't remember that in the motions, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. Yep. Verbatim.
I think they were all, none of them were affected by, uh, what we did. Okay. Holy crap. Eight o'clock already. Okay, what's next?
I think we got it all covered in the conditions.
Okay, I failed, so.
No, you did a good job.
I know. It's random for pens. Three and only one of them is partially working.
Eric, can I, can I move along or am I waiting now? Okay, um.
I'll give it a whirl. Thank you.
No guarantee.
So we have no further planning commission business. We're going to move on to the board of adjustment, uh, business for this evening. And the first order of business along that line will be the approval of minutes from the November twentieth meeting. Anybody have any comments from the board on those minutes, or are we ready to make a motion on them?
Mike, I'll make the motion. We accept, uh, minutes.
This is Timothy. I'll second.
Sorry.
So we have a motion by Mike to approve the minutes and a second by Timothy. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark. I vote aye. The, uh, minutes, the approval of minutes has been passed. So we'll be, we have no old business, but we do have new business. So the first order of new business will be variance application fifty dash V dash twenty-three by the Woodson Property Group LLC. The west one half of lot five and all lots six through fourteen, block four, Highland Park, section nine, township one forty, range thirty-three, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcels two one point four zero point zero two seven zero zero and two one point four zero point zero four nine two zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section nine oh four point six of the shoreline management ordinance to increase the impervious surface area percentage on parcel two one point four zero point zero two seven zero zero. That currently exceeds the twenty-five percent of the lot area threshold. We have the applicants here for this variance. So if you could give me your name and address and then tell us about the variance or the application you're submitting here.
All right. Uh, Brad Woodward, three oh four Lake Street Northwest Water Road, Minnesota.
Okay.
Uh, the variance is for extending, well, we have a, we have a pending, uh, cup application, but in order to make that move or get ruling on that, we need to, needed to apply for this variance. There's a structure already existing on the property that we would like to do something with. So regardless of what, I'd say regardless of what the application, the cup application pending that we have going is, we would need this variance for building anything on there. Cause if, with the structure that was moved off there some time ago, so really it's where, it's an additional adding decks on there that so that, you know, you can sit down there, enjoy the lake or whatever. So, um, that's the intent of this application.
Okay, um. Well, this is Mark and I'm going to, um, try to refer, I don't know if any of my board, I thought somebody said they might have referred to the minutes of the last meeting that we had where you were here. When we concluded our business with you at that time, I know that I stated, but I don't remember how specifically I stated about having, uh, a more formal plan for the whole area. And in my opinion, what you see on the screen here does not achieve that. So, um, I think Eric had suggested possibly in his staff report, and I don't know if it was spelled out to you about a storm water management plan. But that's what I'd like to see in order to move forward with this. So we'd see things, for instance, you'd see grade elevations, shots, where water's going to run, how you're going to handle the water that comes off parking and all those areas. This is not, in my opinion, sufficient to give me the information I'd need to go forward to give you a variance. So I'm putting myself right out there right now to tell you how I feel about it. We'll see what the board here has to say, my colleagues on it, but, um, I don't think I have enough myself here. And I'm going to defer to the board now and see what their feelings are on it.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Chair, this is Veronica speaking. Um, have you, I mentioned to you during lot views about a storm water management plant. Have you reached out to anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, and so do you have something getting started in line that you can provide?
He just, from Thursday to now, he just called me back on my drive here.
Okay.
So alls I've done is been able to make that first contact with him, and he just said, call back, get something set up.
Okay.
Whatever. So first, all he said, it would start with him coming out with a site visit. It would go from there.
Okay, and so you contacted an actual licensed, um.
Contacted the soil and conversation, conversation.
Conservation, yep, okay.
Yep, and so.
All right. Yeah, I agree with, um, Mr. Chair there that we can't really move forward without that storm water management plan. Um, because it will help mitigate this overage that you're requesting. It'll show us exactly where this water's going to go and so on and so forth. So, um, obviously we've got to get through public comment, but I would be inclined tabling the application since the applicant has since lot views, reached out to someone about a storm water management plan.
So, um, maybe I missed that in the last meeting, that request on there, but I thought when we turned everything in, we were told we had met all the conditions and everything that we needed or whatever, but maybe that was, maybe I'm mixing up the two between this and the CUP or something. But, so I thought we had met, met the requirements that were asked of us the last time around. And I know when you mentioned the water management thing, I, that was kind of, took me by surprise a little bit. So I may have missed it, but.
Yep. Well, this is Veronica speaking, and we can direct that to Eric as well, but to my understanding, you probably met all of the criteria for the conditional use permit application. This is additional documentation. Not all of them require a storm management plan depending on the property itself and the impervious surface. So, but again, I can move that to Eric.
Yeah, as far as the, uh, things that the planning commission, uh, specifically mentioned when it first heard the conditional use permit, as to what you wanted for additional information prior to it being taken up again, that was communicated by letter to the applicants. They've sent me a number of emails with what I consider to be drafts of information that they intend to submit for that, but I have not received anything that I would view as a formal submission of those items for addition to the conditional use permit application. The other things to keep in mind with talk of possibly tabling the variance is that with the sixty day rule considerations with the conditional use permit application, we have an extension waiver that the applicants signed and provided. The date on that extension for the deadline is in the latter part of February, and that would require the county board to act on it at one of their February meetings, which means the planning commission will have to take up the conditional use application at the January meeting. So if the variance is tabled, the outcome of the variance will potentially dictate some revisions that might need to be made to the conditional use permit application, which then really squeezes everything. The only way to get around that would be if the applicants wanted to submit another waiver form that pushed out their, uh, date to which they extended the county's review window, which then might give us sufficient room to have the variance be tabled and then have time still remaining prior to that deadline for action to be taken on the conditional use application.
So I can ask the applicant if he's willing to sign a waiver like that that would push that window out, Eric? Is that appropriate?
That's what we would need to be able to really entertain anything in terms of tabling.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mike.
This is Mike. Um, with the information in front of me, I'm in agreement, I cannot act on this now without storm water management plan. So our choices to me are either table it or deny it as it is. With a denial, he can't go forward with the CUP is my understanding. He needs this variance first. So it would behoove the individual to give us an extension because, at least in my opinion, I can't move forward on this without a storm water manager, table it in a storm water planag, management plan. It may not even be able to be done by that time. So if it came to me in this form next month, it would be a denial.
Right. But he has the option, if he's willing, to extend it with that.
Yeah, I just want him to understand that I think we're, some of us at least, or at least myself.
Yep. Would he also have the option of reducing the impervious just to meet the? What he needs to?
Is that?
Yeah, he'd, he'd have the option with, either if this variance is denied or just even without having submitted the variance request. He's twenty-seven percentish roughly, I don't know the exact for impervious surface area. That's a non-conformity, so with what they wanna do with a proposed restaurant and the additional decks that will increase the impervious area, they would have the ability to offset that by removing the equivalent amount of.
Right.
Existing impervious so that they stayed at where they're currently for impervious percentage. So that, that is always an option.
Either way, we either act or kick the can.
The highlighted orange there things, those are the things that we identified that we could remove. And on the site visits, we kinda talked about some of those things. By removing those and adding what we need to go on, it's still gonna be in an increase.
Right.
But we didn't feel we could really remove anything else as the play area down there that is already sand, so it's not being counted as that, so.
So I'm in concurrence with Mike that if I'm gonna be asked to vote on this tonight as you've presented it to us, I'd be uh going down the road of denying this. But you do have the option, and I'm not opposed to tabling it, if, if you wanna go that route.
Well, like I said, I was just, I did make contact, so it sounded like if I get ahold of him now, right away, probably tomorrow, it sounded like they could probably try to get out there and see what they could do relatively quick. But again, I don't have a date yet. And as for moving it out or uh moving out from February is our date or whatever, I guess I don't have a problem with that either. You know, we're not gonna be able to start anything now anyway, so.
Right, so if he were to sign that, Eric, what, again, tell me, as far as how far could we extend it if he signs it, an additional uh document for extension?
It depends, we have two versions of the form. One is that it says we, that the applicant grants the county an indefinite time extension. So then it's as long as necessary for the county to do its review. The other allows them to fill in the blank with the specific date to which the extension is given, and that's what we have on file currently. So it's a little more involved because we already have one on file that says a specific date. We'd need, in addition to a new one with a new date or the indefinite uh version of the form completed, we need a statement accompanying that that would say the prior waiver form that was submitted on X date that granted an extension until X date is void and replaced by this new one.
That would be a statement by us?
By the applicant.
By the applicant, you're willing to do that?
Otherwise, that's the only way that the county then knows which of the two versions of the form is operative currently.
Yep, okay, okay. Think about that, I'm gonna open for public comment right now, and we'll come back to you in a second. So I'm opening for public comment, is there anybody that has public comment on this application? Okay, when you get up to the podium, uh if you state your name and address and write it down, and then you got three minutes.
Carl Carlson, uh two zero three five one Fairwood, Nevis. Um, I guess my question would be, is that um, would that sewer and water be a earmark to determine what you guys would decide, um whether you would approve it or whether you would deny the variance? Does it all re, does it all stem on that uh app, or that, that additional documentation that he's getting?
You talking about the storm water management plan that we're suggesting?
Yep.
Well, from my opinion, my opinion is that we need to see that, I need to see that to make any kind of a decision at all and how I, I can't tell you that it, it will be approved or denied just because we get it, but I don't feel like I can go ahead myself without having it, so.
I, I guess my question would be then, um, in, in reading the preparation for tonight, there's a thing that says staff on the V or the fifty, it's like the second one on the list, if you could pull that up there. It says staff, I mean, I can pull it up on my phone if I can.
You talking about the staff report?
Correct. Uh, uh, and it doesn't say who published that, I was just wondering who publishes that.
That's Environmental Services Staff Report, okay.
So I guess my, my statement would be, that kinda answers the question of the variance right there. I mean, it's kind of gone through the, the whole list of what needs to be provided for the variance, and pretty much everything has, has been answered to the fact that um probably shouldn't be approved in the first place due to the fact that um, you know, the, the heavy elevation has been addressed, which I don't think too many people have addressed that, I know I was here in the August meeting. But not only is it impervious, it's also extremely steep. And um, I don't know what that, um, if you have any considerations with that when you, when you think about impervious surfaces, when you talk about if this is greater than twenty-five percent, whether the grade makes a difference to that, because um, I, I would assume it does. And so my question then would be to, in looking at the, the staff report, um, w- is that enough information to deny it?
Let me, let me, let me try, try here a little, a little bit, um, back to your point. The detail and approach to the storm water management plan will help us decide whether we think that is enough mitigation to overcome the impervious surface situation. Yes, the slope will come into it, but I look at it, I see um, one, two, three, four, seven cabins, which I don't say have any gutters on them at all, so everything that comes off those cabins run down that hill. If you had a way of capturing all of that water, maybe the slope wouldn't ma, wouldn't have as much impact. I'm just throwing out thoughts here. So the point is, the person who does the storm water plan should be looking at all those things, and it should be sufficient and, and um, what's the word, strong enough that we feel comfortable that it more than offsets uh the impervious surface issue, okay? And if I answered your question.
Mr. Chair?
I guess not necessarily.
Thank you, Ken, yeah.
Um, I'd like just a clarification in the staff report. Uh, what it states is if the application included a storm water mitigation plan prepared by a licensed professional that would document how impervious surface area overage would be properly mitigated, staff would be open to considering the request. So they did not say one way or another, what they said would, just basically what we're saying, without that plan, it's hard to um make a decision.
Yes.
Okay, I, I guess I was just, just trying to, to, I, I guess I hope that um, that, that the staff report would be enough to just deny their variance in the first place due to the fact that, that it's already an extremely highly dense property. And to, to have it over the, the impervious uh, uh surface area already, whether, whether you have the storm and sewer, or the sewer water report or not. But, but I guess that was my question, if that was a deal breaker or not.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else with public comment on this application? Uh, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll go back to um the issue at hand here. Anybody else have feelings on that storm water plan as a requirement?
I agree.
Tim?
I'm sorry, yes, I agree with you.
Do you concur, okay?
I, I have a question for Eric. The current resort as it exists is um, non-conforming with regards to impervious surface. Is that a violation or just non-conforming? Because if it's a violation, that violation has to be corrected before we can consider a variance, if I recall, if I'm right.
To the best of our knowledge, it's a legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming.
Component of the property.
Even, even though I read in some of the comment letters that some things were added, like the sauna and some other things were added since, since it was purchased, and could that, that action have created the, the current overage?
No, the sauna was placed on the existing impervious area, so it didn't increase it any.
Okay, so it's legal non-conforming, uh and it's not a restriction then, okay?
Sauna's also been removed from her.
Right, we're, we're aware of that, okay, um.
Could I ask a question, so I can, for some clarity too? So, since there was a house already on this property, or there was, there was a structure already on that existing foundation, which I believe, from what I've been told, is the house that was moved across the road. Is there any documentation that already showed, cause I'd kinda find it hard to believe that if you have a home there or something at one time, it wasn't probably some decking on the, coming off of that base of that house towards the lake already? But I don't have any documentation to show that, so.
Gone too long, right?
There's no record in the file of any decks that were ever there, so.
Other than that little one that's on there.
Again, the way I look at it, I mean, if your intention is to go forward even ultimately to, to do or apply for the, and get that conditional use, you're gonna need to have that storm water management plan. And I, I think um, I'm thinking indefinite extension, um, so we have time to make this work. Um, I'm open to tabling it.
Yep, this is Veronica, I agree.
Everybody is, so um, if you're willing to sign that, we'll make a motion to table and probably we'll be able to push that that way. Otherwise, if we're gonna vote on what we have here, I concur with Mike that, at least in my opinion, I'm gonna vote to deny it.
No, I'm willing to push it out if need to, so we can get something. Like I said, whether, whether we follow through or end up with the other, that previous application, or we decide to pull back and do something else with it, we're gonna need to ha, do something. Anyway, so um.
Okay.
And I don't know if, and then I don't know if it went back to more of a, just more rentals on there, whatever. I don't know if then, does that still require the same storm water management design or, or?
Well, we, we're gonna address what's here right now, not what ifs, cause that, that really doesn't get us anywhere. Mike, are you ready?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I have one more question, I have a question. Eric, the, the um, impervious surface calculation shows total square foot lot seventy-one thousand nine hundred. That includes all the property across the road too? It just includes the, from the road to the, to the um, lakeside, okay? So we're looking at impervious surface on the road lakeside, uh the lake, lakeside for the road, okay? It just seemed, I was looking at the numbers and the dimensions on here, that didn't, it didn't seem to come up that high, so. But that's the way you've done it, okay? Cause this is a hundred and ten, is it twenty-four, thirty, so about a hundred and forty. Okay, probably close.
Getting back to the possibility of tabling.
Yes.
Just having that indefinite extension form filled out isn't all that we need, there's.
What else?
As I mentioned, it gets more technical because they've already submitted one prior.
Okay.
That has a specific date to it, so they're gonna have to write up a narrative that clearly says references that prior waiver and the date it was submitted and the date to which that extension was given and say that one is hereby null and void and replaced by a new one signed today that grants an indefinite time extension for that conditional use.
That would be something the applicant would need to do?
Yep.
Sign that letter or just a separate note, letter? Okay, so we, we could achieve that after we make this motion?
You want that before you make any action to table.
Okay, um.
Do we have a date, that can you provide him with the date of the first letter, of the first tabling?
I can try, I don't have access to all my.
Oh, other documents.
Stuff, so I'd have to possibly go downstairs to my office. Yeah, I don't, I don't have access to that.
Would it, would it, this is Mike, would it not suffice that if he signed the uh indefinite extension and just stated in a separate cover that uh by doing so, I rescind the previous extension that was granted? Or do you want it more specific then?
Locked in more specifically.
Well, then I think we need to take, my guess, would we, we need to take a short break and to get that? Otherwise, I, I, I don't know where we can go with, uh, if we need that first.
You concur, Eric, do we, could we take a, I don't know how we'll get him to draft this note, but we need something that he could write, that you could review and say.
I would say the best thing to do would be, we'd have to take a break, I'd have to run down to my office, get those reference items, I can draft something that satisfies the county's needs, and if he's comfortable with that, he could sign and date it in addition to the waiver form.
Would you be willing to do that? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will take a short break, do I need to do anything official to take this break?
Say we're recessing for five.
How long do you need?
Five, ten minutes, I don't know.
Okay, we'll take a, a recess for five to ten minutes while Eric gets that note drafted for us.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna resume our meeting and, uh, considering this, this application, the applicant has, um, signed an affidavit that would give us an extension, and it also rescinds the previous affidavit, uh, extension, is that correct, Eric?
Yeah, so essentially, what I did was write up something in regard to the conditional use permit. We have, I can read it for you a second, it just states today's date. The undersigned hereby declares that the form titled, "Applicant's waiver of rights under Minnesota Statute Section fifteen point nine-nine dated September seventh, twenty twenty-three, regarding conditional use permit application one CU twenty-three by Woodson Property Group LLC that granted Hubbard County until February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four to make a decision on said permit application, which the county stamped received September eighth, twenty twenty-three. That is attached to this document and labeled Exhibit A is officially withdrawn and made null and void. The undersigned hereby declares that he, she is replacing the above-mentioned form with a new version of said form that is attached to this document and labeled Exhibit B dated December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regarding conditional use permit application one CU twenty-three that grants the county an indefinite extension of time in which to make a decision on said permit application." So with that, we now do not have the time constraint with the conditional use permit and the variance. So you can now entertain a motion to table the variance. We don't have an extension form for that. So our normal process is then we'd give notice in writing to the applicant that the application would then, if it's tabled, that it's been tabled, and invoke our ability to extend the review period on the variance application to the maximum one hundred and twenty days that were allowed by statute from the application date. So it would give us another month, maybe two, I'd have to look at the dates. We wouldn't be able to just take our sweet time. But assuming that the SWCD gets a plan in so that it could be taken up in January, we should be okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification, um, back to a motion.
This is Mike, I make the motion we table this until the January meeting or until the shore, uh, the water management plan is produced.
Could, before you second that, do we want to give him any direction on stormwater management plan? Like, it has to account for all the water on the asphalt driveway and gravel driveway and from the, um, seven or eight buildings, or do we leave it?
It needs to, in my mind, it needs to be for the entire property.
Okay.
Yep, I, I agree with that.
I agree.
So the motion is that we.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mike to table this application until the January meeting at best, and a second by Ken, so we'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
It's Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye, so your motion is tabled and you'll receive a notice from Eric regarding such.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is variance application fifty-one dash V dash twenty-three by Brett and Sheri Wyman, part of Government Lot eleven, Section one, Township one forty-five, Range thirty-two, Farden Township on Wolf Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero seven point zero one point zero one six zero zero. zero seven point zero one point zero one six zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Sections five oh two point one and five oh two point two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed accessory structure to be placed within the ten-foot side lot line setback. Get that file out here.
I thought this one was deferred. It is, oh.
So if I understand correctly, Eric, there's an amendment to this variance that adds in the needed impervious surface variance request and we need to resend public notice to include this amendment, is that correct? We will, we're going to table this application until the January meeting?
Correct, no action ought to be taken this evening due to the fact that the application was amended to include an impervious surface area request, and so in order for us to meet public notice requirements, we have to resend the public notice to include that amendment, and that means that we'll have to place it on the January meeting agenda and then take action on it at that point.
Okay.
Is there also a stormwater issue with this too?
Yes, the Mississippi Headwaters Board requires a stormwater management plan that addresses any impervious-
Anything over the twenty-five percent, yeah, okay.
Correct, and so they're working on that with the Soil and Water Conservation District staff.
Okay.
Do we need to table it or no?
We don't need to table it.
No, because it was amended, and so with the amendment being significant enough, the application date then becomes the date the amendment was submitted, so we still have plenty of time, the sixty days started over with that date the amendment was submitted.
Okay, okay, so we'll move on to the next application. We got variance application fifty-two dash V dash twenty-three by Stephen Schlotter and Joy Knutson, unit, excuse me, Unit Two Beachwood Estates, Section nine, Township one forty-one, Range thirty-five, Arago Township on Island Lake, a recreational development lake, excuse me, parcel zero two point five one point four zero two zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from Section seven oh two of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed enlargement of a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone in Section seven oh three of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to have more than one deck or platform within required structure setbacks on a dwelling unit that existed prior to July twelfth nineteen seventy-one. I have the applicant here, if you want to come up and have a seat, give us your name and address for the record, and then we'll talk about what you're asking to do here.
Yep, my name is Steve Slater.
Okay.
And after eight years of being a resident of Park Rapids on weekends and, and so on, on a part-time basis, it is our wish to sell our house in Fargo and make Park Rapids our permanent home.
Okay.
In order to make the existing structure more conducive to a permanent residence, we feel the need to add square footage. Knowing we cannot expand outside our footprint, the only way is to add a second story, which several members of our association have already done, not to exceed the twenty-seven feet high is what we're asking for, that was in the latest document provided. The stall, the small deck we are proposing would not protrude past our existing lower deck and would cantilever over so as not to need any supports from below. The last drawing provided needs to show that, it comes out even with the lower deck. I know the, um, the one in the upper right corner shows it short of that, and we feel that that deck would really enhance the lake experience. Vast majority of materials and labor would come from local businesses, after, and of course, after over eight years in the area, we have demonstrated our commitment to the Park Rapids area and will become an even bigger part of its tax base for years to come. I'm also relocating my small business as well, we have the full support of the association, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
How come I got these copies? Did you guys all get new copies?
No.
Okay, this is Mark speaking. After we were out there last week, and I do remember talking to you a little bit about-
I got the whole packet the other day, I didn't realize it, here. Those guys, all those had your names on them.
Oh, okay.
The packets that ended up with me.
Talking to you about the height, which I believe at that time you had, you were telling us was twenty-five feet ten inches, is that correct?
That, that is correct, twenty-five, ten, and three, thirty seconds.
Okay, and now you're saying that you're thinking twenty-seven feet?
Just to be safe, um, if you go around the building, it, it, the landscape varies from two foot to two foot six around, and so we're just saying twenty-seven to be safe. I know that the, the last person in our association asked for that as well.
Okay, so my personal concern here is just, do you feel that, well, this drawing that Eric has up on the screen, is that showing twenty-five, ten?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if you're, thank you Eric, if you're saying now twenty-seven, that's a change, okay, and, and-
I, I did put at the top here, I wrote at the top, we're asking for twenty-seven just to be safe, and that there is room for error and the landscaping. It's not, it's not consistently two feet everywhere.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at, I don't know how they feel, my colleagues here, but do you feel that you're set then, you're, nothing else is changing?
All in, twenty-seven, twenty-seven max, it will, it will more than likely be that under twenty-six everywhere, but, but I feel it's, it's smart to just ask for the twenty-seven so, so that there's room for error and landscaping.
Okay.
Is your second level number's gonna change or all of us possibly changing, or are you just thinking when you're all done, your roof's gonna be a little higher?
The only, the only thing that, everything else is gonna stay the same here, the only thing is the landscaping really, otherwise everything else is very accurate there, but they've, they went with two feet for that bottom crawl space area, and you walk around it, and it is two foot six in, in a couple, in places, so I thought it wise to ask for the twenty-seven.
Are you changing the foundation, are you tearing the whole house down?
No, no.
Then how does the base change? I don't quite understand the landscaping and what-
It's just the, just the landscaping, I mean, you measure to the first row of siding where it starts, in the places it's two foot, it's two foot six in other places, so I just felt that was wise to ask for the twenty-seven just to be safe. Will it end up at twenty-five foot ten? In most places, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Sure.
Mike?
Go ahead.
Veronica?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking, I do have a couple of questions. What are you, how is your current layout right now? What does the inside look like? Describe to me, please.
Sure, I, I could, um, um-
Two bedrooms?
It's just two bedroom, and it is a single plane roof, and so it goes, it's tall in the front.
Vaulted?
Yes, and, and then just eight feet, eight foot walls in the back bedrooms.
Okay, and so you have a living room and a dining room on the lakeside, and the bedrooms are on the non-lakeside?
Correct.
Okay, so now, explain to me your new structure. What's gonna be upstairs?
Upstairs is gonna be a loft, there's gonna be one, we're, we're, we're taking the wall out downstairs between the two bedrooms, making it one big bedroom, it's gonna be a master bedroom, and then adding a bedroom up top, and then, and a bathroom. The stairway takes up more room than, than we would like, of course, but I, but the stairway, stairway will be there, we're gonna cantilever over the living room, four feet to accommodate a walkway above the, above the living room, but then, then it'll be all the way up over, above the kitchen, it's gonna go, there will be a ceiling over the kitchen, and, and that'll be a loft area, and that is where you see the, the new deck cantilevering over so that, so that will support the deck out front.
So the deck doesn't come off of a bedroom, it's just a, a walkway loft open space?
Correct, it's, that little deck is just off the loft above the kitchen. Otherwise, if we wanted the other, the area above the living room, we would have to, to have a deck, we would have to run supports down to the ground, and we, we didn't want to go there.
How big is the deck?
Six by twelve.
And what's its purpose?
Basically to enhance the lake experience, I mean, we're probably gonna put a little bistro set up there, great place to have coffee in the morning and open up the view from up there.
The master bedroom is downstairs?
The what?
The master bedroom is downstairs?
Correct.
Is he gonna go upstairs and go out on the, on the deck?
I, I would, I am for coffee in the morning, and, and like I said, that's, that's just gonna be a great addition to our cabin.
There was, in the neighbors, there was one other one like this that had a deck, if I remember.
Okay.
Yes, yes, there is one, there is another cabin in the association that does have an upper deck as well.
Anybody else with comments or questions? Well, we're thinking on that, I'll open, I'll open for public comment. Looks like we have one gentleman here.
Hello, Thomas Berg, I live at eleven fifty-five Lime Tree Circle, St. Cloud, Minnesota, and I also reside at two six zero eight one Island Bay Trail, Park Rapids. I'm Mr. Slater's neighbor to the west and south of him. I will take care of that, thank you. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for Beachwood Homeowners Association, I am the treasurer of the association. You did get the letter from Tim Grill, our president, said that we have voted unanimously to allow Mr. Slater to move forward with this project. As his neighbor, I'm also here to show my support, that I think that this is an excellent plan that he has put forward. I do have to correct, Steve, there are actually two cabins that have upstairs decks, and I am one of those two. Mine is off the back of my cabin, and for those of you not aware, I am on the creek along Hay Creek, and my deck protrudes out the back and is cantilevered off the back of my structure looking over the creek. And there is a second one, which would be cabin number five, I'm one, he's two, and then we go down the lake, cabin five also has a second story deck that is with inside their footprint. In Steve's case, that deck that's there would still be in the variance that has already been given him, and I think it would be an excellent addition to our association. So that's my two cents, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for public comment on this application? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'm sorry, your current cabin doesn't have any gutters at all, because everything goes off to the back.
It, it does on the one plane in the back, and plan is to put gutters on both sides now.
Okay, I would like to make sure that you do that, that direct the water away from the lake.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else, feelings or comments on this, or ready to make a motion?
This is Veronica speaking, I just want to comment that the thirty-foot setback measurement has not been verified by the county, by the Environmental Services Office, and cannot be done at this time because ice has already formed. That's a little bit crucial for me, because we're in the shore impact zone, I do have some hesitations on the height, I'm not in favor of twenty-seven feet, I'm not super in favor of twenty-five feet, being in the ordinary, being in the shore impact zone. I'm open to a second story with some reduction in size.
This is Tim, I'm not, I don't have a problem with the, the height because he's the last place on the end of that property, he's not affecting any view, and it seems the neighbor behind him has a view facing the other way.
Are you open to twenty-seven?
I'm open to him having his safety factor to be less than seven, twenty-seven.
It's all it is.
Not to be over.
Not to be over.
Okay, how about the, the issue that Veronica raised about the thirty-foot, it's not verifiable right now?
My feeling is, is it is what it is, we're not gonna move that.
Okay.
It's existing, pre-existing. So-
The deck, the deck and everything is gonna stay the same in the front, right?
Deck would stay the same in the front?
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna dial down the upper one, or your thoughts on that, but-
I don't see its purpose, but if other people do it, it's not gonna materially change things, that.
Okay, anybody ready to make a motion?
This is Mike, normally on a request like this, I, I would be opposed to this height, but it looks to me that in this particular development, a cat's already out of the bag through a variety of reasons, and it won't really change the character with the staying within the existing footprint. With that being said, I'll make the motion that we approve this application with a height of no more than twenty-seven feet, the existing footprint can't be exceeded, and the built as per plans and the structure be, the condition mean the structure be guttered and, or be directed away from the lake. And for the findings of fact, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes intent of the fish, for controls? Yes, this particular development already has most of the cabins built to the two-story level, I think there's, after this, there may be only one or two left. Is the property proposing to use, the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by an official control? Yes, and again, the development already has that, mostly second, two-story buildings, and a second story for a residence is not out of the ordinary, and for three, four, and five, except the staff findings of fact.
Mike, just one bit of clarification, are we accepting this drawing as the plans that were- Are we accepting this drawing as the plans that were adhering to? Would you say?
Well, I'm only concerned with the height, I guess, in my motion is, is the plans and, we, the deck as, as drawn, yes. The deck can be six, is going to be six by twelve, not to exceed six by twelve.
For the second story?
For the, on the second story deck.
Second story, okay. Okay.
Okay, this is Mark. Um, I'll second Mike's motion. So we have a motion by Mike to approve this. Uh, he's given us findings and two conditions. Um, and, uh, he's developed, well, he developed findings for one and two and accepted staff for three, four, and five, and I'm seconding it. So we'll take a vote on this right now. Um, Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
I, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's been approved. You'll receive a letter in the mail from Environmental Services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is applica-, or variance application fifty-three dash V dash twenty-three by Carrie Gilson. Excuse me if I mispronounce it.
Gilson.
It's just like it sounds. Fail the letter.
Gilson. I'll try that. Okay, thank you. Lots two and three, block one, Sunny Point Edition, section twenty-one, township one thirty-nine, range thirty-three, Crow Wing Township on second, Crow Wing Lake Township on second Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel zero six point three seven point zero zero three zero zero. Applicant is requesting an after-the-fact variance from section seven oh two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for an expansion of a non-conforming dwelling located in a bluff impact zone. And so if you could give us your name and address, and then tell us briefly what you wanna do.
Carrie Gilson, one-two-five-six-seven Beach Drive in Nevis. This is my general contractor, so I will let him take over, cause he knows what he's doing.
Yeah, I'm Gerald Kirth, seven-nine-one Western Avenue in Park Rapids.
Okay. You...
So basically what we've got is we had some snow weight damage to the roof, just by design how it was built, and we're just trying to get that repaired. We did extend the roof out about a foot versus the old one, and had to move our pier puddings nine inches out.
Okay.
And then change our slope, that was it.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any questions or comments here on the board for these applicants?
This is Mike. Uh, to me, this seems like a pretty straightforward request, and, uh, I'm, I'm in, indicating that I'm, I would be in favor of this.
Okay, I concur with you, Mike, by the way. Anybody else have concerns?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
So we're gonna open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Motion? Anybody?
This is Ken, I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, or approve this, um, variance application fifty-three V to that, dash twenty-three, and accept the findings of facts of, of the staff.
Okay. Wait with the second?
This is Veronica, I second the motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Ken, uh, and he's accepted the staff's findings of facts, and a second by Veronica. We'll take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application's approved. We'll get a letter from Environmental Services.
Do you know how long it is till we can apply for that after-the-fact permit? Or do we have to wait for that letter first?
Just give us a few days so that my staff can get informed of the decision and get that in our software, and we can come in and get it.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the docket here is, uh, variance application fifty-four dash V dash twenty-three by John and Wendy Tragji. Part of government lot six, section thirty-one, township one forty-two, range thirty-three, Thor- Thorpe Township, and part of government lot ten, section thirty-six, township one forty-two, range thirty-four, Clay Township on Big Man Trap Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels two six point three one point zero two two zero zero, and zero four point three six point zero zero nine zero zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from section four oh two point one three point R of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to operate two short-term rental units on a lot that does not meet the duplex minimum lot width and buildable area requirements. We've got the applicant here, if you could give his name and address for the record?
John Tragji, one-five-nine-zero Blackberry Court, Sartell, Minnesota.
Okay. And what are you asking for?
Sure. Um, just a quick summary, my wife and I own a real estate company that invests in renovating properties to increase property values in communities around the state of Minnesota. The property on Big Man Trap was previously a resort called Trails End Lodge, and had consisted of a lodge and about ten cabins until the cabins were individually sold off. The lodge and one guest cabin eventually were rented out as a bed and breakfast in a single-family home, both of them, until they became bank-owned. We purchased Trails End Lodge and the one remaining cabin, uh, at the end of June twenty twenty-three for four hundred and ten thousand. We've already invested a hundred thousand dollars in renovating the guest cabin, and our plan is to, uh, invest another four hundred thousand in renovating the lodge. Uh, the property had sat vacant for many years prior to and was neglected for fifteen years. Mind you, when I introduced myself at the Lake Association meeting this summer, um, I had told them that we had purchased Trails End Lodge, and I received an exciting round of applause from everybody at that meeting. So we purchased the property with the intent of renovating it, selling it, uh, within a year. That's typically our MO. Uh, we're not from the area, and after spending the last half of the summer here, we absolutely fell in love with the area. We determined that if we could rent out the property, we'd be able to afford it, to keep it, and use it when it wasn't rented out. What made us think this way was for our two families. We have two families that are over twenty people, and it was consistently hard to find , uh, spots for, uh, our families to vacation. So that leads us to our variance request. When inquiring with Environmental Services, I was told that there were two items that must be met in order to receive them, uh, or meet the duplex requirements, those two being, uh, total square footage of the lot, as well as the shoreline. Uh, eighty thousand square feet for the lot, ours is, uh, a hundred thousand. However, we're three feet short of the two hundred and twenty-five feet of, uh, shoreline requirement, uh, which is what we're requesting the variance for. I'd like to think that the three feet we're short is a minor request. Um, I did see some staff report notes, albeit just tonight, uh, for the first time regarding a forty thousand square foot building, uh, buildable area requirement that is not met. Uh, this is the first I was made aware of that requirement. Additionally, I see there's some concerns about the new septic system and, and parking perhaps being within an easement. Um, I can assure you that the parking or septic system would not be located within an easement. Speaking of easements, as you may be aware from looking at the survey, uh, there are many easements, not only on our property, but our neighbor's property. The reality is, is there is only two sixteen-foot easements that are being accessed by only two full-time residents and one seasonal property owner. Um, one is on the east side of the lodge, and the other is on the west side of the guest cabin, both of which, when you did your site visit, you walked down both of them. Uh, additionally, is, is another example of how, how, um, complicated the survey is. Uh, you can see that, um, there, there's, uh, an actual easement line that runs right through the middle of the guest cabin. Um, there's a enormous, uh, portion of that property that is covered up with easements, whether it be for septic or perhaps old right-of-ways. But, again, the reality is, is we're looking at two, uh, two drives, one that go, uh, by the lodge, and one that goes behind the cabin. Now, I understand that there is a concern about the number of people that would be allowed to stay on the property. Um, mind you, the lodge is, uh, seven thousand square feet. It's a very large home. Uh, I'm sorry, six thousand. We have seven thousand square feet between both properties. So my only argument with, uh, the concern about the number of people, if in fact that is a concern, uh, with the board here, um, is that it's my understanding, even if it was not, the variance was not granted, we still would be able to have a short-term, one of the properties have a short-term rental license. So my question is, is does it matter if we have the lodge that had, that, that sleeps twenty-four people? And how is that different than if we had the lodge and the guest cabin that slept the combined total of the twenty-four people? Specifically in line three of the staff report, it notes specifically that says the lot is best suited for a single short-term rental unit operating on it as the lot does not meet this, as the lot does meet the single-family dwelling minimum lot size. So again, I just ask, is there, is there really that big of a difference between having one property that sleeps twenty-four, or if you have two that sleep twenty-four? The last thing I would mention is that we've been investing in vacation rental properties for twenty years. Um, this is not a side gig for us. This is our profession. If you, if you haven't, I would encourage you to take a look at some of the reviews that I included with my application from our current vacation rental property. Um, we have all five-star reviews, one of the only units in our complex down in Florida that has all five reviews. Um, we take this very seriously, um, not only for our guests, but also for our neighbors. Um, we've developed great relationships, uh, with our neighbors. We have met everyone, uh, here, um, on Jewel Trail. And, um, I guess the last thing would be, we have all but three property owners that travel south of the property, or to the right, if you're looking at what's, what's on the screen here. Um, all but three property owners travel south of the property, and would not be impacted by our guests. All of them are seasonal, and all of them have permanent residences outside of the state of Minnesota. The only one that has a permanent residence in the state of Minnesota is the person all the way down at the end. And I think to speak of the relationships that we've developed in the short period of time, uh, this summer before everybody left, um, we've already had our next-door neighbor, uh, the one actually to the south, the little cabin, that, uh, texted me about a week or two ago that said, hey, um, I, I passed on, uh, your information to one of my friends so they could rent out your place. So I think that speaks, uh, hopefully, uh, to the relationships and the, the, the importance of those relationships that we have in the area. So thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome. Anybody with questions?
If one thought in terms of twenty-four people, it didn't seem to me there was much room at all for recreational activities, um, on the property. I mean, the lake is there, obviously, um, and/or parking. So how do you propose dealing with, um, a lot of people and cars, uh, with no place to go?
Sure. So we have, um, designated parking area, uh, we would be allowing them to use our three-stall garage. Yep, thank you for bringing this up. Um, so, uh, parking both inside the garage for three vehicles, parking outside of the garage for another three vehicles, and then along the backside of the road, uh, behind the guest cabin, um, we already have, um, parking areas designated for that. Now, keep in mind, um, you know, if, if this, and again, I'm comparing it to my previous experiences from my family. Um, you, 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 you don't have ten, fifteen cars coming with twenty-four people. Um, you know, you probably have four, five families that are each traveling, you know, with a vehicle. And maybe one or two of them might bring a boat, uh, so you have to have room for that trailer. Uh, be- between the parking and the garage, outside the garage, and then also the, the parking areas behind the guest cabin, uh, we should have, uh, sufficient room for parking. And if it was your determination that you'd wanna have us limit the number of, uh, parking, uh, or vehicles that could be on the property, I'd be open to that, too. We're not interested in having twelve couples come and, uh, y- you know, bring twelve different vehicles and, and, um, use our spot. That's, that's not what we want. That's not our clientele. Our clientele is large families. Uh, and I'm sorry to answer your question about recreational, too?
Yeah, I'm thinking it, uh, in most situations like that, there's always, uh, friends who wanna show up for a day or two, or, uh, guests that wanna show up, there's always another couple more cars and more space needed.
Sure. Sure. We are, um, wanting to develop a, uh, fire pit slash gathering area outside. It would be to the south of the lodge. You might have even seen a small little fire put, uh, fire pit that we had put there when we, um, when, when you guys came for the site visit. Also, because we're adding a new septic system, it opens up, uh, some of the area, uh, for, uh, by the guest cabin, uh, for recreational, uh, use, whether it be swing set or, you know, something like that for the kids.
Anybody else with questions? Okay, we're gonna open for public comment. And seeing none, we'll close public comment. So going back to the beginning here, and you're aware that your lot is, uh, slightly three feet, it looks like, short of the, the width you need for this? But you're not, you were not aware, you're saying, of the, uh, square footage that you needed, um... Buildable area. Looks like you're fourteen thousand square feet? Is that correct, Eric?
I think that's what the note said, yeah. And you're correct. I was never, I've made several meetings, or have had several meetings with people at Environmental Services, and those two things were the only two things that were ever told to me that I needed to dig. Otherwise, I would've addressed it in my application.
Okay.
This is Mike. Uh, I personally believe that we took a lot of time in putting in place the short-term rental part of the Shoreland Ordinance, and, um, thinking back on, on so many of the comments, uh, I believe that buildable area and lot sizes was, was extremely important, uh, where it would suddenly trigger into multiple, um, rental units. Based on that, and, and the fact that it's considerably short of buildable area when you put into effect the easement, septic system, so on and so forth, um, I personally could not support this to start opening up this, uh, on a county-wide basis for, for what I would believe many more applications to come, inciting a precedent.
Uh, thank you for that perspective, Mike. Thank you for that perspective, Mike.
I think I'm with Mike on this, plus I just don't see the space to accommodate a large number of people who come to a lake to do something. There's no lawn or anything area, and all it's gonna do is spill over to neighbors or whatever. So I'm not in favor of allowing two units to be rented on this property.
Thank you, Ken.
This is Tim speaking, I feel the same way, I think it's too much of an impact on the neighbors for such a change of being an STR.
Thank you, Tim. I think all of us feel, well, I shouldn't say all of us, but I know, I probably concur with everybody that's spoken here so far. One of the challenges we'd have is to answer the findings of fact, there's five questions, we would need to answer them all affirmatively in order to make a motion to pass your application. I know I can't do that in addition to the details that each of them have given so far, so I guess I'm also in the sense opposed to this application as I see it. Anybody ready to make a motion, or I can? Veronica, do you want to weigh in before I make a motion?
I have the same feeling, I don't think the property area is large enough. However, I do have to give credit to the applicant that the second, the smaller cabin, is only 1,000 square feet approximately.
Correct.
So there is short-term rental going to happen on the large cabin, and that additional 1,000-square-foot building, it doesn't have that much impact as far as, you know, size-wise. But again, it doesn't fit all the criteria, even though it is so small. So I, again, I have to agree with the board that we can't answer affirmatively to all these questions in this particular situation. That little cabin kind of messes things up.
Okay. I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to deny this application, and I will accept the staff's findings of facts.
This is Mike, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by myself to deny this application, and a second by Mike, with the staff's findings accepted. So I'm gonna take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye. Your application has been denied.
Thank you.
We'll send you a letter. Thank you. Okay. You are. Next on the DACA here is variance application 55-V-23 by David and Sandra Locke, Lot 2, Block 1, McNelly's Edition, Section 30, Township 143, Range 32, Lakeport Township on Cabrona Lake, a recreational development lake, Parcel 19.48.00200. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Part 1, Sections 502.2 and 503 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a dwelling located within the 30-foot crest of bluff structure setback, and Part 2, Section 601 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a water-oriented accessory structure that exceeds the 48-square-foot maximum allowed structure size. Applicants are also requesting a variance from Section 502.2 and 503 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a proposed deck to be located within the 30-foot crest of bluff structure setback. Got you both up here, if you could give me your name and address for the record?
David and Sandy Locke, 27672 Majestic Pines Drive, La Porte, Minnesota, 56461.
Thank you. Okay, and tell us briefly what you want to do here.
Yeah, oh, good evening, everybody. We bought the place just over 10 years ago, and we were looking into putting in a deck out the back of the house, and when Cal came out, he told us we had three violations that we were unaware of, all these during our ownership. One was the shed down by the lake, or the boathouse is two feet too big. The other is the house is non-compliant, it was built a little too close to the bluff, so we need a variance for that. And then the deck, as it sits, is too close to the bluff as well, and we need a variance for that. And in lieu of that, we'd like to replace it with a deck, like I showed you at the visit, up higher, closer, and then that would alleviate three feet from the, you know, be two and a half feet, or whatever it is, closer to the house from the deck, so a little bit further from the bluff.
Okay, thank you. Anybody with comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Veronica, I do have questions. As you mentioned, that you had purchased the house approximately 10 years ago, so when, after Cal came out to your property, to view the property, was that the first time that you realized that you were in violation?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else?
This is Mike, I believe this is fairly straightforward when I look at it, based on that it's there, and there seems to be very minimal impacts, if any whatsoever, with the completely wooded hillside, the screening from the lake to the actual shed down below, that's slightly over. I'd be in favor of granting this variance request.
Okay.
This is Veronica, I concur on all three parts. I do have some, I would like some input on the potential conditions that the staff has suggested, I'd just like to run those across the applicant as well, and if the board members are open to those conditions.
Have we seen those?
You may or may not have, but I'd be happy to read them for you, or read you them, so. So for the after-the-fact condition on the shed, Part 2, is if the shed is ever to be rebuilt and/or replaced, it must be brought into compliance with the 48-square-foot maximum footprint, meaning that you'd have to purchase one that's only six by eight, instead of your eight by eight. So that, you're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay? And the after-the-fact condition for Part 1 would be that the variance is only valid on the existing structure, and if it is ever enlarged, a variance to do so would be required, and if it's ever to be rebuilt, like, you know, if you ever needed to rebuild it for whatever reason, then it would, must be moved to meet the setbacks, including that 30-foot setback from the crest. So if you ever needed to rebuild the structure for whatever reason, or future people 20, 30 years down the road ever needed to rebuild it, it would just have to meet those setbacks. Do you understand that?
So let me paraphrase, if it burned down, if we had to rebuild, we'd have to move
Have to move it back a few feet, which you're looking at six feet, maybe, on the one side and four on the other.
The basement, the foundation.
Oh, it does have a basement, or just a foundation?
Well, no, it's got a foundation, the crawl space.
Crawl space.
It's a wood foundation, so the fire department probably ain't gonna save it, so. I guess that would work.
Right, okay. And the same type of, I mean, if there's, I mean, if everybody's open, anybody open to those and such, so.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, and then same for the variance request, the lakeside deck that you're proposing, I'm in favor of that as well. Similar condition, if the house was to ever be rebuilt, then that same setback requirement would be, needs to be met for the deck, so they all would have to meet that setback. That would be a little bit more difficult to achieve. That's a big if in the future, that's one of those situations.
Yeah, I guess we're okay with that.
So let's, let me do public comment, we're gonna open for public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Anybody else with comments, or is anybody ready to make a motion in these?
If, any comments on the board, I'm prepared for a motion.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Okay, then I make a motion to...
Just correcting some prior owner problems, so.
Oh, right, yep.
Okay.
So this is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the application per site plan, the after-the-facts and the variance for the deck, all combined. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. Yes, the bluff impact zone and shore impact zone are well vegetated, so the house, shed, and deck are all well screened from the lake, placing conditions on the house, deck, and shed to meet the setbacks if ever reconstructed are in harmony with the Shoreline Management Ordinance's intent. Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control. Yes, the applicants have acted in a timely manner to correct the violations found. It is a reasonable request to have a lakeside deck with handicap accessibility, and again, same as number one, conditions have been placed on the residential structure, deck, and water-oriented structures if ever needed replaced. Number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current and/or prior owners. The subject property and neighboring properties are located within a bluff. Although a permit was initially acquired in 1997, the 30-foot setback from the crest of bluff was not met by six feet on the northeast corner and four feet on the southeast corner. Do I have that labeled right? Is it southeast and northeast on the map?
It would be, I don't know if it's four and six feet, but yes.
According to your, the papers here, I, that was my determination, because we were only 20 feet from the crest right there, 24 and 26, so six feet shy and four feet shy, right?
Eric, is that Cal's measurements?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, placing a condition that the property is ever to be rebuilt, it must meet the 30-foot crest setback. And number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Yes, approving the act of fact, variances will maintain the essential character, as it's been the residential home, and decks have been in place since 1997. Number five, did the stated practical difficulty involve more than just economic considerations? Yes, economic considerations are not cited in the application.
This is Mike, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Veronica to approve, is that Part 1, Veronica?
I did all parts, and I can repeat the conditions if necessary.
No, you don't have to repeat the condition.
Do you need my conditions repeated?
They're pretty much what I had in the staff report, so.
Yep, yep, okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. So that would be Part 1 and 2?
All of the above.
Oh, all of the above, okay, and we have a second by Mike. Veronica has given us the findings of fact and the conditions. So we'll take a vote on that. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Mark, I vote aye, your application has been approved, and you'll get a letter from Eric's office stating such, all set. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, thank you very much. And after you get your decision letter, permits will still have to be required.
The movie was gonna go on for six hours, four hours, right? Didn't know the movie was gonna go on for four hours, did you?
Just glad we weren't trying to get a permit for a campground.
Anything miscellaneous, Eric?
We're a week out from the application deadline for January, so as per usual, we don't have a whole lot of applications turned in yet. We'll have the one that was tabled this evening, or the two that were tabled this evening, and, yeah, we'll see what else, but. I mentioned at the lot deal, but the other one would be the county board set a public hearing for the ordinance amendment regarding the school use for Tuesday, January 16th at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay.
And they seemed pleased with the recommendation that the commission made, so they didn't make any changes to that.
Okay.
So that would be what I'd have for you.
Okay. Anybody ready to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Ken, I make a motion to adjourn.
This is Tim, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Ken to adjourn, a second by Tim, take a vote. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica, how do you vote?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Mark, I vote aye, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.